Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting, August 7th, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board, and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle on the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The next Planning Board Regular Meeting will be held September 4th, 2024, at 7:30 PM via Zoom, and the next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held August 14th, in person, or you can watch on Zoom. A roll call, please, Amalat.
Mr. Albert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Here.
Mr. Wilks?
Here.
Council President Rutherford?
Here.
Ma'am McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Where You Now?
Present.
Chairman Bago? Here.
And just for the record, Mr. Morgan is not joining us tonight.
Thank you. So the first thing on the agenda is the minutes of the June 5th, 2024 West Orange Planning Board Meeting. I make a motion, we adopt the West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. We have a second.
Second.
Mistress Maraldo, seconds on the motion, Amalat.
Mr. Albert?
Was not here for that meeting.
But you did hear to the audio and I've got.
Yes, I did. So in that case, yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks, same thing?
Yes.
Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Ma'am McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Where You Now?
Yes.
Chairman Bago?
Yes, motion carries.
I wasn't there on June 10th. I'm sorry. I have to say abstain.
It was June.
You get that, Amalat?
Or I'm sorry, July 10th? What was it? I'm sorry, go ahead. Right, alright, sorry.
All good?
Yep.
Yep.
Outstanding. PB 24-02 Wonder Group Incorporated, Block 152.01, Lot 1445.01, Zone B. The applicant is requested to be adjourned to the Planning Board Regular Meeting on September 4th, 2024. There will not, there will not be any requirement for any additional notice. PB 24-06 410 Main Street Holdings LLC, Block 113, Lot 262, 264, and 308. 410 Main Street, applicant is proposing a three-story mixed-use development with 12 residential dwelling units above, ground floor parking, and commercial spaces for the applicant.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Benjamin Wine of Prime Two Bell and Miss Sally, on behalf of the applicant. Is that everybody doing this evening? Good. Alright, so with that, what I'm gonna do, I know that this project began two months ago at the June meeting, where my colleague Jason Two Bell presented the application in my stead. I was elsewhere that evening, but what I'm gonna do, given that it's been two months, I'm gonna give a brief summary of our application, and advise who I intend to call as witnesses, and go through our presentation in detail. So just very briefly, the property, as you know, is currently vacant and most recently housed a dilapidated residential dwelling that required demolition, as the actual applicant was unable to procure a certificate of occupancy upon closing on the project, on the property, due to its dilapidated state. While the lots to the west are zoned as residential, that's further up Park Drive North, the whole Main Street corridor, as you know, is Zone B2, to encourage more downtown vibe on a street that is arterial and transit-oriented. While there are several commercial uses that are permitted specifically outright in this zone, the governing body and this Planning Board actually recognized through the master plan, and a change in the zoning in 2020, that the mixed-use development that we're proposing here this evening should also be considered subject to certain conditions. As you'll hear, as we go specifically into our planning testimony down the road, we are properly cited before this board, specifically because we meet those conditions that are outlined for mixed-use development. You'll also hear that due to the site's topography and its corner location, as well as the B2 bulk requirements not really working so well with this particular site, we are seeking a number of bulk variances, or C variances, as part of our application. And lastly, we're also aware that I'm sorry, is somebody speaking? I'm getting an echo. Okay. There have also been a number of proposals for this site over the years. We had, we had had multiple conversations with your prior planner, with Mr. Greigle, as, as the years went on. At some point, I believe there was a five-story development proposal to the zoning board. There were also several internal proposals that never made it to a board, but ultimately, we feel that what's here this evening, being a Planning Board application, is an appropriate and viable development that will enhance the goals that you have set forth in your master plan for Main Street. We do have several variances that, that accompany this application. As I, as I indicated at the beginning, they are all of the C variance variety, hence why we are for this board and not the zoning board of adjustment. Our planner will go through them in detail, but you'll hear from our foundational witnesses as well as to what the nature of those areas of relief are, and why exactly we're seeking them. Ultimately, our proposal is to develop the site with a new three-story mixed-use building that would consist of 12 residential units, above ground floor active storefront use along Main Street, and a parking garage in the rear. The goal of the ground floor is to activate that Main Street frontage and bring it down to grade where it's currently well above grade, and help create this walkable neighborhood-style commercial space. I also want to indicate that while, when we were last here in June, only our architect actually presented, and I don't even believe that it was opened up to questions for her, for the public, but given the feedback that we received from the board, which was quite extensive, we've gone ahead and revised our architectural plans quite a bit, and we intend to present those to you this evening. So what I'd like to do, Chairman, unless you have any questions of me, I'd like to have our architect be sworn back in, and present the changes that she has made to the architecture proposed for the development, and answer any questions that the board and then the public might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. One second. My housekeeping error. We have to have our professionals sworn in. Ms. McGovern, please.
And Mr. Hazel and Mr. Hess, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Wine, is it the same architect that we deered last meeting?
Yes, it is. It's Brittany Clem.
Ms. McGovern, correct me if I'm wrong, but she is still sworn in?
She should be, unless you want us to redo it, because it was two months ago.
I, I think what dear and swearing is effective. Okay, so Mr. Wine, she is still sworn in, and go for it.
Perfect. Thank you, Chairman. So Brittany, what I'm gonna ask you to do is bring up the plans that, that were submitted more than 10 days before this meeting, and walk the board through, give them a little bit of a reminder as to what it is that we're proposing, and also the extensive changes that you've made in the interim.
I'm pulling up right now.
Have the, have these plans have been submitted and noted? Okay, good.
Yes, they have, Chairman.
Thank you.
What I'm planning on presenting has been, has been submitted, yes.
Thank you.
So we, we heard the, the comments, and we appreciate all of them that we received at the last meeting in June, and we looked at the buildings along Main Street so that we could blend in with the historic character and the traditional elements that are already existing along Main Street. We enhanced the facade. So I'm showing, right here, I'm showing, this is the same angle as last time. We see the front of the building along Main Street, and then to the right, you see the, the side going up Park Drive North. So we enhanced the facade, both Main Street and the Park Drive North facade. We have a more traditional look. We have more brick on the upper portion than we had prior. We have more articulations within the building. There's a lot more single windows, and on the uppermost floor, some archtop windows. The, the trim around the windows is enhanced. This is all up on the, the upper levels. Then on the rest of the building, we have enhanced band around the building, which used to be Soldier Corps brick, and is now cast stone. And we had, we added awning to the storefront. And at the top of the building, to draw your eye up, we added a more elaborate cornice with brackets. And then moving to the back of the building, as we wrap around the back of the building, we did make some enhancements here as well, but they were more minor. The facade treatments that are in the front have wrapped around on both ends. As well, the cornices are a little bit more elaborate in the back, but not to the same extent as those facing the Main Streets. Now, this, this view, as we discussed prior, shows the building as a two-story building from the back, and that's created due to the grade change. Moving on to the plans, there haven't been any substantial changes to the plans. The only changes that were made were reflecting the window changes and the look, the locations and the sizes of the windows throughout the plans. The rest of the plans remain the same. Just to reiterate what was discussed prior, we have two one-bedrooms, two one-bedroom with den, and eight two-bedrooms. I don't know if you'd like me to go through the square footages as well?
Sure, you could go ahead.
Okay. The one-bedrooms are 839 square feet. One-bedroom with den is 912 square feet. And the smallest two-bedroom is 1,083 square feet. Those have remained the same. Moving on to the elevations, the exterior elevations have also been updated to reflect the changes with no other, with no other alteration as far as footprint or anything like that. We achieved the more, we feel that we've achieved the more traditional look of the building, particularly along Main Street and along Park Drive North. And the, the building height remains the same as it was in the prior hearing, which is 34 foot, four inches.
Okay, Brittany, if you could also just, and I know you did it again, it was two months ago, but if you could go back to the, to the ground floor plan as well, and just identify what's located on the ground floor and how it's oriented?
Sure, I'm gonna zoom into that area, so everyone can see it more clearly. So on the ground floor, we have 900 square feet of commercial space on the corner of Main Street and Park Drive North. Then we have a trash room, which exits onto Main Street, and the trash will collect in this room from the chutes above. There's, there's a trash chute on both of the upper levels that the tenants will use. Then there is a lower lobby, which comes in off the street, and an upper lobby, which comes in off the parking, off of the, the parking garage, as well as some utility space, which is labeled utility storage, but it's not for tenant use, it's just for building maintenance. And within the, the parking lot, we have 13 parking spaces, two of which are EV, the handicap, as well as the one adjacent to it.
Okay, and moving back to the, I think you can go to the front rendering is probably the best image to use. Okay, if, if you can just describe how, how this, how the front especially has been integrated to the grade level, and in, in place of the retaining wall that exists there today.
Yes. So today, there is a retaining wall that extends from, actually from Park Drive South, across the adjacent property and across all of our property, and a good portion up Park Drive North. And with this design, we're bringing down the entry to Main Street, so it'll be much more walkable and much more appealing. The sidewalk is also greatly extended, because our building is set back, and all the space between the property line and the front of our building is now gonna be incorporated in the sidewalk.
Okay, and the area that is what I'll call cut out, to be used the storefront, that's where the commercial space, and then access to the, to the trash and residential lobby are located, correct?
Correct. The first, the first window and door, and the second window, these, this is all the commercial space. And then the next entrance is the trash, which will be covered with an opaque film. And so there won't be any view inside it, even though it is a storefront. And then the lobby entry as well. And then on the side, on Park Drive North, there is a, a door with, and window entry for, for people to enter, as well as the garage door. And the exit, the exit sign, which is an element that was added, was the caution vehicle exit sign that was added after the sprab meeting. I forget what month that was in. They, they had a recommendation for that.
Okay. Alright, great. So Chairman, that's, I know Ms. Clem had testified previously. She's certainly available to go into more detail if you like, but my goal this evening was for her to touch on the revisions really that she's made in the course of the last two months.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Mr. Albert, who wasn't able to add questions last meeting, and then we'll see if any of the members of the board have some questions, or our professionals. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, let me just get my questions up. Um, can we, actually, I think I have a question for the zoning official, is can we have an opaque window, a completely opaque door window in the front, if that's allowable or not? On the trash room?
Only one-third coverage is allowed.
One-third of the total, okay.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. Um, if we could go to the interior diagram that shows the trash room, I had a question or two there. Um, yeah, if you can just zoom in, perfect. Is it, is, is there any safety issue only having the one door on the exterior? If there's a trash fire or something like that, is, is that a problem or anything along those lines?
Every trash room I've designed has one door.
Okay.
And I've never, I've never come across that issue.
Only to the outside of the.
Um, correct. I've never had the issue that, that there was a trash fire and one door was an issue. And the, the ground level is completely non-combustible.
Okay. Um, so trash comes downstream from the chutes, recycling gets manually taken into the trash room?
Recycling will get brought down, yes.
Okay, so, so that has to come outside and around, and, or through the lobby and then outside and around?
Yes.
Okay. Um, if we can go to the roof plan? Great. I know there were some questions last time about whether or not there was any consideration of having a full stairway up to the roof instead of a hatch. That's okay. So I wanted to see if that had changed at all, if you were still thinking a hatch.
We, we kept the hatch.
Okay. Um, has there been any consideration of a green roof here?
It's possible, but the, we, we chose to go with a white roof. We feel that would be, that would be sufficient for this site. There is gonna be some extensive landscaping down on the ground floor, and stormwater will be addressed as well by the civil engineer.
Yeah, the, the reason I'm asking, and I think it would go hand in hand with having a full stairwell to get up there, is, you know, we're, we're looking at 82% lot coverage, I think, versus 60%, 73% building coverage versus the 40% allowable, versus 15% for the old building. So this would seem to me, you know, if we're possible, to have something up there that people could access that had grass and greenery of some sort, that it would maybe restore some of the, you know, air, light, open space, or at least somewhat make up for the reduction in it from the, you know, previous condition.
Understood.
Um, any consideration on the Park Drive North side of the building of going with a larger setback there, as opposed to the five-to-six-foot clearance versus the 25 that's required? I think to, to my eye, it's more of an issue there than it is on the Main Street side, because as you go further up the block, the neighboring houses are set back more, they've got front yards with landscaping, gardens. You know, to, to me, that side of the, the front on Main Street, I, I think is, you know, replacing or retaining, while I get that. But on the side, you know, with the, with the residential neighborhood, this seems to be out of character to me, and you know.
I will say. The planner will address these items as well, and we'll talk about the, how it fits into the neighborhood.
Fair enough. I think some of this is definitely for planning. Um, and probably also for planning. I'm curious if there was any sort of, this isn't really an architecture question. I'm curious about wildlife, and if there was any survey of what was there in the, you know, previous lot, and then vacant lot, that's now going to be, you know, gone. That's not really architecture, so I think.
Yeah, Mr. Albert, I think I, I overheard the chairman mentioning something about it, a different property, a nudist colony, that, that may have been some wildlife that existed here as well.
Alrighty. Um, I thought I had one more thing, but I don't see it, so I think, oh, I did wanna say, I do think the updates to the building are an improvement, and I like that the rear rendering now has the correct amount of grass, as Mr. Cardoza pointed out. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
You. I, I know we went through this with the architect, I'll go through the board rapidly. If anybody has any questions about the new, about the change, we'll start with Ms. Caffrey.
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Caffrey, Mr. Cardoza.
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza, Mrs. Maraldo.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so good evening. Could you just remind everybody, sprinklers or no in the building?
Yes, the building is fully sprinkler, will be fully sprinkled.
Okay, will that include the garbage chute that you were just talking about before?
Yeah, yes, and there are special requirements for there to be a sprinkler head within the chute as well.
Okay, and so based on your testimony before, is there slab on the, between the first floor and second floor?
Yes, the first floor construction is all non-combustible, with a three-hour rating between the first floor and the residential levels. The most typical way we do that, it hasn't been fully designed on this project, but the most typical way we do that is with a concrete slab.
The concrete slab will be between the first floor and the second floor then, right, to make it non-combustible? Okay. I just want to be sure. Alright, um, no, I think otherwise, you know, I'm still pushing for that roof, the roof hatch, I mean, the roof door. I, you know, building that size, I think it warrants it, and so that's gonna be, I appreciate you doing the updates, the rendering you did, but I'm, that's still a concern for me. Other than that, I have nothing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maraldo. Mr. Klein?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein, Mr. Wilks.
Um, yes, can, can you repeat, what's, what's the slope where, where the parking garage is? I don't know if that's really exactly the measurements. I mean, the picture looks very nice, but I don't know if it really fully represents what the area looks like currently. But what's the slope that you're gonna have to replace coming, even from the garage going down to the, into the corner to Main Street?
It's the same slope that's there right now. The, the sidewalk is going to remain at the same slope.
It's the same slope. I'm just wanting to know as far as you know, I mean, it looks a lot steeper in person, that's what I'm saying. And that, that looks relatively flat. You're trying to say you guys are gonna flatten that out to really match that grade?
No, there'll be the grade, the rendering, I understand your point. The, the grade coming in, there's going to be an angle at the bottom of that door from 20, on the high point, to 249.26, and on the low point, to 47.09 feet. So there will be some, the door will be like trapezoidal shaped, the bottom will be angled.
Yeah, because there's a very tight street. I mean, I just, going from the picture, that's not really representative of what the street exactly looks like, but the and the setback in the back, where the, where the back, where the windows are all at, and looks very lovely back there. What's the setback from the house that's next to it? How far is that?
I don't know how far back the house is from the property line. I believe at the closest, I know this is a, this is a civil item. I wanna say somewhere around 12 feet at the, at the stairwell. But we'll have to, the civil engineer will go in detail on that.
Okay, and then the, I guess the planner would get, I'll be able to ask them more questions about the specifics on the inside. How many apartments is it again? I just.
12 units, six per floor.
Six per floor. And how big is the space for the storefront?
900 square feet. So these are the
square.
These are the units.
Was anything proposed initially, or the judge has asked of the planner, as far as ideas of what to put there in the storefront?
The planner will get into that.
Okay. Alright, no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. Council President Rutherford, any questions, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do. Thank you to the professionals that are testifying, and all those that are here. The, I'm going to actually ask questions, both of the attorney who made the introduction, as well as the architect. Is that appropriate, Mr. Chair?
Sure, just name who you want to answer the question, please.
Mr. Wine, you said that the applicant was unable to get a CO upon closing. Was the property in the same condition when they purchased it as it was when they demolished it?
My understanding is yes, and in fact, and, and I'll just, I'll ask you, Council President, to give me a little bit of latitude in terms of my timeline, because this was so long ago. But I remember that my client brought to my attention, I believe that there was either a violation issued, or a, or a notice that there might be a violation for failure to obtain a CO upon conveyance of the property. And my client had, had, had done the research and worked with his professional team, who basically said there's serious structural concern here, so went back to the township, I'm sorry, and, and was told that the alternative option to obtaining a CO is to obtain a demo permit and demolish the, the structure in order to be in compliance, and that's what was undertaken.
And this, this applicant purchased the property when?
I, I would have to look back at my notes. I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
So, and so in the interest of time, please send to me via email or find it before the end of the meeting, who they purchased it from. I wanna make sure that this was an arms-length transaction, and when that transaction transpired. Those are my two questions for you, Mr. Wine. Make sure that this was a, a transaction that was at full arms length when the applicant purchased it and was unable to get a CO upon closing on that transaction. Those are my questions for you, sir. Back to the architect, and I didn't see your last name. I do apologize. I know your first name is Brittany. I don't wanna call you. Uh, is it Kilm? Clem? Yeah, I'm getting a little older, so my eyes don't work quite as well. You, this is a mixed-use property. What percentage of the property is retail?
I don't have that information.
What is the total square footage of the property?
The property or the building?
The building, sorry.
The, 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 the first 1,800 square feet. The upper floors are each 8,450 square feet. The total is 25,700 square feet, and of that, 900 square feet is retail.
Got it. Um, and I know that you made some updates, but you did not change the size or the location of the building on the lot. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are no changes to the footprint.
Okay, a moment ago, you said the setback at the rear is 12 feet at the stairwell. Is it consistently 12 feet? It looks like that is probably the longest.
The setback varies. That's on the civil plans. The civil engineer will, will cover that in detail.
Excellent. And can you zoom in on that first floor plan for me, please? What, there's a, there's a, something that extends from the stairwell.
This?
Yes, yes. What is that?
A walkway, concrete walkway. There's gonna be a retaining wall, because the, as we know, the grade slopes up, so where this door exits, the walkway will be, will have a small retaining wall, I think maybe one or two feet tall. And then it will dissipate as you get closer to the sidewalk.
And then the inside that retaining wall, is that, is that pavers, is that, what, what is that?
It, it's being shown as concrete at this time. It's an, it's a required egress pathway from, from that stair, from Stair Tower B.
And how wide is that space?
I believe it is five feet wide.
Okay, so the, and will the civil engineer know for certain, or or is there someone else who will know for certain how wide that walkway is?
He should. I believe it's five feet, but he should know that.
Okay.
If not, he might be measuring it now.
Thank you very much. Um, what is the width of the sidewalk where the retaining wall in the front of the building begins? So it looks like you've got a wider sidewalk.
That is a civil question.
Okay, I'll ask him that too. Um, you mentioned in your testimony that there's a door on the Park Street North side. I didn't see that on the slide. Can you point that out for me?
Sure, it's right here. So Sure, it's right here. So just below the, uh, the garage door, there's a, a man door.
Is that shown on that, uh, uh, first slide that you have, the illustration of the facade?
Yes, it's shown right here.
Okay, so it doesn't, oh, that's a window next to it is blocked by the.
Window and then the door is, um, slightly obscured by the, the plantings.
Got it. Um, on the south side of the property, how, what are the setbacks?
So that's, um.
Civil also?
That's civil also, that's this side, correct?
Correct.
Um, yeah, that's civil as well.
Alright, uh, someone asked, asked earlier, um, I think it was Mr. Albert about the, the, um. Opaque covering on the trash room. So if, um, this. The, the windows are to be in compliance with the code, only one third of that. Um, can be covered with the opaque film or whatever it is you're gonna use to obscure the vis- the visibility. Uh, does that mean that trash will be visible from the street?
Um.
Or are there some type of?
One third, is that one third of all the glazings or a one third of each pane of glass is allowed to be obscured?
Our, our, um, our zoning officer can answer that. Um, Ms. Gary Adams, could you answer that?
Good evening, Board. It's one third of each individual window.
Okay. So. I, I would think it would be better to conceal the trash and have more, um, either frosted glass. Or an opaque film. Um, there are a lot of films out there that are, uh, for example, like a, a gray color or slightly reflective. That you don't even realize that you can't see through them.
Understood, um.
But I do, I do, um, understand your point that it is, it doesn't, uh. It doesn't meet the ordinance.
Uh. I think that's all of the new questions that I have. Um, let me just double check before I. Yep, that's it for me. Thank you very much, Ms. Clem.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Mr. Wine, please do not send anything directly to Council President. Uh, in the planning board, you send it to, uh, Ms. Garrett, Ms., um, Jamalat. Or you may send it to Ms. McGovern and then we will disseminate it to Council President, uh, in that fashion. The question I have for you, Ms. Clem, is doesn't the RSIS require a six foot sidewalk in a densely populated zone? That when it meets the curb?
Um, that is something the, the civil engineer will address.
I'll ask that question then. Great, thank you. Uh, we'll move on. Uh, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Ms. Clem on her testimony?
Well, first I wanted to start with a thank you to Mr. Wine for the summary. I did appreciate that and to Ms. Clem. Uh, thank you very much for these revised plans. I know I reacted harshly to the initial plan. So I do appreciate this, um, more traditional look. Thank you for that. I do want to ask, uh, maybe there aren't enough units, but are there affordable units in this complex?
Um, I'm, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, and, um. Would there be someone that could talk about a marketing plan? Is there a marketing plan in place for recruiting the retail space?
Um, I'm not sure about that. I think the, the planner will discuss the types of, um. Uses that go into a space like this.
Okay.
Not sure.
Yeah, Mayor, if, uh, I don't know if you wanted me to, to at all, uh, jump off of that. Um, one of these things, and I can, I can say this with, you know, a fair amount of confidence, um, as I, I do a lot of representation of. For example, seven eleven and Wawa convenience stores and things of that nature, um. This is not the type of, uh, of commercial use that is, that is going to work. Uh, those types of uses look for. Traditionally spaces with, with smaller buildings and large open space for parking, um. This is, you know, I can't speak to how it's gonna be marketed, but realistically, and the planner can get into more detail. This is your neighborhood commercial type of use, like your little coffee shop or, or a nail salon or things that, that don't. Generate the need for quick in, quick out, you know, lots of vehicles.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, I know that there are twelve units, um, can you talk about the parking variance?
Uh, she's the architect. Why don't we, why don't we wait for the people who are gonna talk about the parking variance to do that? Would that make sense, Mr. Wine?
Yeah, I was gonna defer that to, my favorite thing to say is I, I punt that to the traffic engineer. Um, so we'll have him discuss that and then obviously our planner as well.
Thank you.
Um, that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I'm wondering, it is for the architect or someone else, but, uh, thank you for your presentation, but. Do you have anything to do with the exterior lighting?
Um, yes, the exterior lighting, it will be discussed with the civil engineer, but you can see, uh, most of it on the elevations. Cuz, um, unlike most of the projects I present, all four sides are shown. So you can see all of the lighting that it, you can, you know, all four sides are shown in the renderings, which is unusual. So you can see along Main Street, we pre- we propose, um, some building mounted lighting. Same along Park Drive North, some minimal lighting and then continuing around the back. Um, really, it's just emergence, or not emergency, um, uh, egress lighting above the doors, which is required by code. One in the back over the stairwell door and then one just to the very far right of this. Um, we have an exit door at the electric room.
Okay, so my question's concerning light pollution, light effect on traffic on Main Street and. Emergency lighting, let's say when the door for the garage is open and closing, that would go to the civil engineer?
Um, yes, but the, um, I spoke about it before, but the light that says when a vehicle is exiting or entering. Is shown on this elevation as well. I'll, I'll zoom in for you.
Oh, okay.
Will be, there will be a, a light that flashes and, um, alerts pedestrians that there's a vehicle coming.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I'll wait till the civil engineer. Thank you very much, Brittany.
Thank you, Ms. Clem, uh, the, the nine hundred square foot, uh, uh, retail space. Is that, shouldn't that have a bathroom in it or are you not planning a bathroom in it?
Um, there can be a bathroom in it, there, but it is not part of the current plans. But there certainly will be a bathroom in there. We'll probably, um, when we, assuming this gets approved and moves to construction drawings. We would at minimum show rough in for that, for future bathroom.
Okay, and what is the, do you know what the size of an ADA compliant bathroom is?
Uh, about seven and a half by six feet.
So it'll be about thirty-five and a half square feet. Somewhere in that neighborhood, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, do you think that a, uh, a, a space like that is marketable since the question is without a bathroom?
It will have, it's required to have a bathroom, I could.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Great, so there will, there will be a bathroom in that space somewhere.
Yes.
Okay, great, uh. Do any members, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Ms. Clem on the, uh, updated plans?
Yes, I do, uh, just out of curiosity, I'm looking at the layout of the first floor. With the commercial on the co- commercial space on the corner and the trash. Our room and the lobby enclosure. Is there any reason why the trash room was, uh, proposed there? I mean, I, I, I would assume it has something to do with the connectivity to the residential floors above, but is there any, uh. Reason why it was proposed in that location, sort of in the middle of the commercial space and the entry, uh, to the, the building?
Hmm, um. It does have to, it does have to do with connecting to the floors above. It is typical, if I go, if I go to the floors above for a moment, I can show you. It's typical that we put the trash room near the elevator and stair because typically a tenant will come out. They'll throw their trash in the trash chute and then take the elevator or stairs down and go about their business. Um, so it's very common that they are generally near the elevator and the stair. Now, we, um. Going back to this, we wanted the commercial space to be on the corner. Um, and then obviously the, there are only two more rooms down here. One is the lobby and one is the trash room. I guess in some ways they could be interchangeable, but, um, we wanted the trash to be accessed, uh, via Main Street.
It just seems to me that the, 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 the trash itself, not to say that it will not be maintained and controlled and would be. Uh, giving off, uh, file orders, but it just seems to me that it's sort of in the middle of everything. As opposed to be, being somewhat remote from where the heavily pedestrian areas will be, especially since. Uh, the trash room would not be something I'd expect. You'd have a lot of people going in and out throughout the day.
Um, that's true, yes. It will get, it will get very, the doors will get very little use. It will mostly remain closed. Um, and that's why on the front facade, it blends in with the rest of the facade as opposed to having a completely opaque wall and an opaque door.
Uh, other question, um, in terms of the area to the southern part of the front facade. That is, you have identified as utility and storage, um. Was the decision to keep a, a retaining wall in that area, was that as a result of wanting to have? Such a space in that location or was it, uh, sort of just, um. Convenient because the, the, the retaining wall was there?
Um. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the front rendering cuz I think it helps depict it. It helps to break up the facade a little bit too. It's not just one long facade at the same level. And since we have utility space behind there, um, as well, and we don't need access to it at this level. Um, therefore we have no, no storefront. And that, um, that abouts it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Mr. Hess, do you have any questions for Ms. Clem on the presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, I do have a question, um. We talk about the trash room door exiting out onto Main Street. Um, but the solid waste management plan that was submitted talks about the pickup being on Park Drive North. And that the, uh, collection vehicle would pull up on Park Drive North, um, whi- which means that. I assume then you'll be wheeling trash cans up Main Street? For a, a fair distance to, and past the commercial building to get to the trash truck?
I believe. I believe, um, maybe that's an old. Maybe that's based on an older design when we had, when we had the trash room exiting along Park Drive North, um. The current, uh, text I have says trash and recycling will be picked up by a private hauler. The collection vehicle will pull up along Main Street. The attendee will roll out the dumpsters for collection. Once the refuse collection is complete, the collection vehicle will continue forward along Main Street. No turnaround required. Frequency of collection will be two times per week, which is pretty standard for, uh, multifamily apartment building of this size.
Hey, that, that's not the document that I have. So could you arrange for that revised solid waste management plan to be submitted to the board?
Yes.
Thank you. And, um, one other question that the, um. Warning lights that you're proposing at the garage, will there be any audible component with that?
Um, uh, there can be, I for, I do not recall if this unit has audio or not. But I, there certainly can be if the board would like it.
Alright, I think that's a discussion item.
Actually, I think they, I think it may be required to beep. Yeah, I think there is a little bit, a little noise as well, yes.
Right, and that's, that's why I'm wondering because, um. I, I'm not sure every pedestrian is going to notice those lights.
Hmm. Yeah, I believe there is an audio.
Okay, thank you. And then your plan only notes the lights on the, um, elevation view, so you would amend that then if. Audio is proposed, you would add that to the plan?
You wanted to depict audio on the plan?
Yeah, I think right now all it says is lights.
That's correct, um. On the civil engineer's plan, he has the cut sheet for this fixture, um. I'm not sure if, uh, maybe when he testifies, he can, he can state whether or not. It includes that information on the cut sheet.
Okay, yeah, on your sheet, A four oh one, it just says it's a caution vehicle exit warning light fixture.
Correct.
So if there's an audible light, we'd like.
We could say with audio, okay.
That's all.
I see your point.
So, Ms. McGovern, we're gonna make that a condition that it has audio.
Got it.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I, I had my hand up before.
Okay, Mr. Seraldo.
Uh, I.
Alright, Mr. Seraldo, one second. Mr. Hess, are you done?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seraldo, you're up, sir.
Okay, thank you, uh, this club, I, we were just talking, like, to piggyback one, um, um, what Mr. Hess said, um, the audio stuff. We've recently, this board has been taking up action with a lot of garages such as this or closed. So one of the things we like to put in is one of those audio visual, um, emergency remote stations that somebody has a problem. Hit a button, it's Wi-Fi connected and, um, so that if somebody's inside the garage and they don't have a cell phone or whatever, they can. Try to make an attempt. So I think that's something that we can piggyback along as part of the condition to, um, add that into the structure itself. So.
Like an area of refuge type thing?
No, no, it's a, it, if you go to a lot of parking garage nowadays, they have like a box typically about, you know, maybe a foot wide. By about three feet tall or so, um, and it's, it's a Wi-Fi remote box. If you push a button, it gets, it gets a nine-one-one collect call type of thing. To, uh, the local, the local dispatch center. So for any kind of emergency, it's more, it's more for emergency notification. And it does have a blue light also that, that blinks. So I think that's something you should consider putting in there and we'll make that a condition. Um, the second thing is, uh, the, I, I about to ask earlier, we were talking about the nine hundred foot space. And, um, and, uh, uh, we were talking about, we know it's gonna be retail. What is, I know that you can't say from the planning perspective, but if a coffee shop or a, any kind of, um, food type place goes in there. What provisions have you made for any grease laden vapor type removal device, a hood, so suppression hood, things of that nature?
Um, none have been designed at this time, but during the, um, construction document phase. We would, we, um, would potentially add in a chase for that. Uh, there are, there are some spaces we have for chases to, um. To provide fresh air and heating and ventilation and air conditioning within the corridors. So, um, we may be able to, uh, adapt one of those spaces or enlarge.
So you would run a hood, a hood line up through the roof or would it be outside of the building in the front or the side of the building?
Most, it most definitely would not be out the side or the front. It would, if anything, it would be through the roof. Um, but a coffee shop, I don't, I mean, depending on what they're doing in there, would not necessarily require a hood.
Uh, that's not true. A coffee shop, if anything that has grease laden vapor, if they're making Taylor ham and egg, bacon, egg and cheese, whatever, if it's grease laden.
That's not necessarily a coffee shop.
Well, uh. Uh, we could just, we can, we can, uh.
If you have a grill, correct. Yes, if you have a grill, of course.
A grill needs, a grill and a grill, anything that produces grease laden vapor needs an exhaust.
Of course.
So, so, you know, most coffee shops I know usually don't just smell like coffee, they smell like a good bacon sandwich, so. And, and at least a good one, um.
Mr. Seraldo, if, uh, if I may, just because I have the benefit of, uh.
Mr. Wine, go right ahead.
Sure, uh, of being able to text with my client. They're furiously texting me right now that they intend likely. Um, for that to be some type of, uh, either straight retail or, um, or, or an office type of use. So unlikely that there will be, you know, food service there, but your point is well taken that obviously anything. Um, to the extent that whether it's with this applicant or, or, you know, if down the road ten years from now, um, it changes out. Obviously would need to meet all code requirements no matter what.
Right, well, I, and so I would like to get a look at the floor plan again. So where would that, you know, likelihood, you're saying you have chases that in the, uh, is that in the garage? Um, the, the garbage area, the gar- uh, you know.
It would probably, it would probably come up through, um, one of these two tenants. And so you could, um, box out an area maybe in this dead corner of the kitchen and put a chase through there. You could box out an area in the dead corner of this closet. There are spaces you could, you could take a couple of square feet and add, and add a, um. Uh, a chase and if that. If the board, um, would like, we could certainly add that as a condition that there be required to have a chase for the possible future tenant. That requires it.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking of the future because, and I'm also going back to my, you know, my, my stance on the, on the access hole in the. In the roof. So if that hood is gonna be up on the roof and spewing out grease laden vapors, then we need to get to that roof quicker. So that, that's, I'm just tying it all together. So just to make you understand where I'm coming from.
Is this a condition to require to have, it's called a chase?
It would be a, a pipe chase or a ventilation. It's, it's some kind of chase where, where we can, um, where we can put a roof exhaust. It would be a, a pipe chase or ventilation. It's, it's some kind of chase where, where we can um, where we can put a roof exhaust in it.
Unless, unless, Mr. Smeraldo, unless we preclude uh a uh, a food service establishment that would require that. So if it's, if it's, if the applicant says it's not going to be, then you don't need it. They don't have to put it in if they say, well, it's never gonna be. If it's going to be in the future, the options are they could put it in later on, or they could put a chase in presently. So there's options. I think the applicant will come back and let us know how they, what they feel.
I, I don't wanna handcuff the applicant in the sense of, they'll tell them they can't put in a food establishment.
But we're not.
If, if they want to, then it's fine, but then I just want preparation ahead of time, that's all.
Absolutely.
So, uh, so those are my que, uh, those are my comments and, and concerns.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Smeraldo. Any members of the public have any questions? For Ms. Clem, the architect on her testimony last meeting or this meeting, please raise your hand to be identified.
Yes, we have several.
Okay, before we get, before we bring anybody in, I just want to preface this by saying a question starts with which, when, why, what, where, how? And it is focused specifically on Ms. Clem's testimony. If she can't testify on a subject, she will say, I don't have that information, I don't know, or one of the other professionals can testify to that. And or Mr. Wine, the uh attorney will chime in and say this person will testify, or this is not something we're going to testify at, at all. So I just want all the members of the public to be focused. If you want to, if you want to make a comment at the end of all testimony, you may. At this point, we're not looking for comments, we're looking specifically for questions. So I am not going to be rude, I'm just going to ask you to focus and we will move this along expeditiously. Thank you very much for coming and first person up, please raise your hand and be identified.
Can we unshare the uh, the plans, the architectural plans? So I can run the clock? Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, we have M K A. Please state your name and address for the record. You should be good to go now. M K? She just dropped off. Okay, we'll go to, oh. We'll go to Susan Lessick. Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Lenchek, two thirty-four Egorock Avenue, formerly a resident of the Park Drive Loop for forty-nine years. Okay, um, this is re, in reference to what was called A one at the last meeting, the rendering, uh, that rendering from the front, uh, from Main Street. Um, this is a question, but I'm just providing context. The townhomes on the south side of the property are not depicted. Uh, but it was stated that there's only about six feet of property from the proposed building to that property line. Given that proximity, why are the adjacent townhomes not shown on this rendering? But rather what is shown is a grove of trees that does not exist.
So the question is why, why are we showing trees and not the adjacent building?
Well, I, yeah, the trees don't exist, but you show trees and buildings do exist, but you don't see them.
Ms. Lenchek, are you ref, are you referring to in the proposed rendering or an existing condition?
I'm uh, what, that the townhomes are in fact there, but the rendering does not show them. And the trees are not there, but the rendering shows them.
It's an artistic uh choice to, to um show around our building. Um, we, we generally um show the, the big, the building with a little bit of context. But we have now modeled the intricacies of adjacent properties in this, uh, in this layout.
Okay.
And I believe they're, they're set back a little further as well.
What, what are set back further?
The townhomes.
They're, they're, the townhomes are almost at the property line and the proposed building is almost at the property line. So there is very little space between them.
So Ms. Lenchek, I'm just gonna direct and say that when you see the civil plans, and I'm not, I don't mean to cut you off. When our civil engineer testifies and you see the actual layout of the plan, including our proposed landscaping plan in detail, that might provide you a little bit better context for. What, what, what is actually going to exist should this application be approved?
Okay, thank you. Um, alright, and maybe this also will be for the civil engineer, but you, I'm sure you'll tell me. Um, Ms. Clem has testified that there would be plantings on the property, uh, so, and so is there a plan? I'm sorry? Hello?
Hello, I'm sorry.
Okay, you, you testified there'd be plantings on the property? So is there a plan to plant trees or shrubs on the south side of the property? Is that for the civil engineer?
Yeah, that's uh, you, you'll see, and I, I certainly don't mean to be dismissive, Ms. Lenchek. You will see though, it's um, the, the landscaping plan will be presented in detail and you can certainly ask your questions of the civil engineer.
Okay, um, yes, uh, but yes, I just wanted to let you know that, by the way, um, N K Adams was cut off. She did not cut herself off, but so I believe that you'll be getting to her next. Um, so in, it's the distance to the first home on Park Drive Northwest of the proposed building. I know, Ms. Clem, you mentioned it could be twelve feet in some areas, but as we understood, uh, it was only eight feet. So the A two rendering, which shows the back of the building, shows a very wide grassy area in that location. And given that, isn't that rendering inaccurate and misleading?
It has been revised, uh, and what was presented tonight shows a smaller um grass area between our building and the adjacent.
It is smaller, but it's still a heck of a lot more than eight feet uh in, in appearance. So it's, it does still appear to be, I'm sorry, um, the question is, doesn't it appear misleading?
So again, Ms. Lenchek, you'll, you'll see it, there is a pinch point at eight feet, but uh, um, you'll see when the civil engineer testifies that it, it widens out. Quite, there is an eight foot or eight, eight and change foot point, but um, that is not the entire extent of that rear yard.
Okay, and A two also shows the, a south side of the proposed building next to the townhomes. And that, does it not show an open area when in fact it's only about five feet from the property line? So once again, is this not also misleading? And again, you're prob, probably gonna punt it to the civil engineer and if that's the case, that's the case.
Brittany, does, maybe the question is, does the revised rendering you showed tonight, um, what we'll call revised A two? It's not even a revised A two because it was part of the plan, but is that more, you know, is that more accurate than the A two that was previously presented?
And um, it is, and it doesn't show much of the side yard because of the sloping of the land. You just see the top of some of the shrubs.
Okay.
Alright, um, uh, uh, now, is the, the depiction of the width of the bottom of Park Drive North accurate? I know that might be civil engineer, however, it is the ren, it is shown as a, as part of the rendering.
I'm not certain, but the number of lanes I know is correct.
Yeah, it appears to be much wider than it in fact is, and as Mr. Wilks pointed out, the, the uh. The grade of it is also misleading because it's far steeper there than it, than it appears. Are we allowed, since we're pro se attorneys, to take a little bit more time?
You're gonna have to come out, uh, Ms. McGovern?
Are, Ms. Lenchek, are you an attorney? Is that what you're saying?
No, but we're, we're pro se attorneys, uh, that's.
No, that's, um, you're, you're representing yourselves and at this portion of the hearing, you're. Given three minutes to ask questions. Uh, Chairman, do they go back to the beginning of the, at the end of the line and they get to ask another question? It's just to cycle through to make sure everybody gets to ask their question.
Okay, thank you then.
Thank you. If you have a question for Ms. Clem about her testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
Okay, M K? Please comment address.
Yes, M K Adams, Park Drive South. Um, as a pro se attorney, I'm entitled to as much time as a lawyer to cross-examine a witness, isn't that correct?
One sec, one second, Ms. McGovern?
You, are you an attorney?
I am a, I'm a pro se attorney in this hearing.
Okay, I don't understand what a pro se, are you a licensed attorney?
I am not a licensed attorney, but because our objector group could not afford an attorney, we are behaving and acting as pro se attorneys. For each individual, and in that case, we are as in, we are entitled to ask as many questions as an actual attorney.
Yes, except for you're self-representing, you're not an attorney, alright, so it's just clear on that. Um, so you're only asking, you're each asking questions on your own. And the purpose of the three minutes is to make sure that everybody gets a chance to ask questions. It's different if you're a licensed attorney representing clients, then you get the floor, you ask your questions and they go on, we go on to the next people. It's not to say you won't get to ask all the questions you want. You have your three minutes now and then the next person goes and the next person you get back online. And then you, you'll come up again, but they, we wanna get through everybody's questions. And so that's, that's the order of the way that this will take place.
In that case then, the three minutes should be applied to the questions that I ask, not to the expert's response. Because and as I asked Ms. Clem, certain questions, she could then eat up my entire three minutes at this round, isn't that correct?
I will stop the clock then, and as I stopped it with uh Susan.
Thank you so much. So my first question, Mr. Chairman, is for uh Mr. Wine, based on what his colleague, Mr. Tuvell, had testified la, in June.
Listen, I need you to focus, okay?
Oh, I'm focused, thank you.
And, and right now, we're going to ask Ms. Clem questions about her testimony. Okay?
Yes, I know, and what I wanted to do is just follow up on the question that Council President Rutherford asked. About the proportion, the ratio of the retail space to the total square footage of the building, based on something Mr. Tuvell had said in June.
Well, Ms. Clem testified to the numbers, so I'm sure she can, and she's the architect, so I'm sure she can figure out the ratio.
No, it's a different question, Mr. Chairman. I, I, the question was about an amendment to the RSIS standards. That Mr. Tuvell brought up in the June meeting at the very beginning of the meeting. I wanted.
We're now, I, I'd like to focus for a minute. We're now asking, hold your question, we'll come back eventually. We'd like to ask Ms. Clem questions about her testimony, okay?
Ms. Clem, you testified during the planning board meeting on June fifth that this design, quote, respected adjacent properties. Ms. Clem, how is designing a setback of five feet when twenty-five feet is required respectful of the townhouses at four hundred to four oh two Main?
This, um, this will be further discussed by the planner and the civil engineer regarding the setbacks. But the property across the street on Park Drive North also abuts the sidewalk and presumably has a smaller setback.
Ms. Clem, I'm referring to the five foot setback from the property line to the, to the townhouses just south of four-ten Main Street. So there is a required twenty-five foot setback in that zoning ordinance, but this setback is five feet. You described it as respectful of adjacent properties. How is that minuscule setback respectful to my neighbors who live in the townhouses at four hundred to four oh two Main?
Uh, well, hold on, Brittany, hold, yeah, Brittany, hold on, Chairman, can I make a point of clarification if that's alright?
Mr. Wine, go right ahead, sir.
The, the setback along, what I believe Ms. Adams is referring to along the south side. The requirement is a side yard setback of ten feet, um, not twenty-five, twenty-five is a different setback requirement. Um, but Ms. Clem, maybe you can answer the question by talking about what portions of the building uh fall within that ten foot setback and what are actually compliant?
The um, the ground floor is uh at five foot setback, but we, we meet the ten foot setback at the upper residential floors.
Ms. Clem, you showed us the um, the driver warning sign that is displayed on the side of the garage entrance. Uh, how will drivers on Main Street be able to see the warning light, especially if they're going northbound on Main Street, turning onto Park Drive North?
The light is to warn pedestrians that a vehicle is exiting or entering and crossing the sidewalk.
How long does, um, how much time will it take to open the garage door on Park Drive North once it's triggered by a clicker or a fob?
Um, I don't have that data in front of me.
Do you have any approximation of the amount of time to open that garage door?
No, I don't.
But it, they will have to pause on Park Drive North as that garage door opens in order to enter the garage, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they'll be paused on that street and possibly susceptible to other cars turning onto Park Drive North from Main, is that correct?
Yes, and the traffic engineer will go into more detail on the trip generation and other elements.
Ms. Prim, on June fifth, you explained that a driveway could not be designed on Main Street because of grading issues, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you aware that the original plan presented by Mr. Sugar's team in twenty-twenty-one included a subterranean parking level access off of Main Street?
So again.
Not familiar with those.
And again, Chairman, point of order.
Mr. Wine.
Mi, mi, the, this project team was not involved in twenty-twenty-one. My client only purchased this property in twenty-twenty-three.
So the question is she's not aware, let's move on.
Um, in, when we're talking about the audible alarm related to the, to the garage door, how many decibels is a typical warning system?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but it will, it will be loud enough that a person walking by will hear it, but it will not be loud enough to disturb the neighbors.
Uh, how can you be assured of that if you don't know the decibel level of an, of a typical alarm?
So, Ms. Adams, I can tell you that there are noise ordinances in effect um throughout the township as well as uh state requirements. And any noise that emits from uh this site will need to comply at the property lines with those requirements.
Since this warning system is designed to protect pedestrians at all hours, it's true that the system would not be deactivated during the evening or overnight hours, is that correct?
That's correct.
So all residents within earshot of that alarm would be subjected to the sound at any time of day, correct?
Those walking in front of it, if, if the door is triggered, yes, but it's not going to be making a constant noise at all hours of the day and night.
How long does the, the sound alarm for, the alarm sound for?
I don't know the answer to that.
Approximately how many seconds?
I don't know the answer.
Uh, are, aren't most garage uh audible warning systems triggered by some sort of electric eye?
Um, it would be triggered by the door and potentially an electric eye as well in connection with that.
So it's possible that any breaking of that electric eye would then instigate the alarm and not deactivate the alarm until the electric eye is res, is. Unbroken, is that correct?
I'm not familiar with uh, with the exact operation.
I see that the clock has run out, should I um allow the next person in line to?
Yes, please, yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, any members of the public that have questions for Ms. Clem on her testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Bill Mills, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Mills, I live at uh Park Drive North and have been a resident of that address for over twenty-five years.
Great, your question?
Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Okay, so uh, coming back to the, to the retail space, uh, and, and also the, the parking situation. Are any of the parking spots designated for that retail space?
The parking will be covered by the civil and traffic engineers.
Okay, uh, and then also regarding the, the square footage. Uh, for mixed use, what is the, the percentage that is square footage of the retail space should be to the whole uh overall? Square footage of the building?
I don't know of any requirements for that.
Okay, because it, it seems that uh, if you, if you don't count the bathroom, you're only at about, I'd say, two percent of the space. Is dedicated to retail, if you include the bathroom, about three and a half percent. It just seems like a awful small amount to consider that. It just seems like an awful small amount to consider that, uh, mixed use. Are there, um, places in the, in the, in the, uh, plans where elevator or HVAC, um, units will be on the roof?
Yes, yes.
And how, how much noise will those make?
A negligible amount, and they will meet whatever the town ordinance are for noise.
Okay, because you know the bill, the street goes up, so it, what is the roof of that building quickly becomes the, uh, kitchen window of the nearby buildings.
Yes.
It's, it's not like a, above, like in a, in a normal level city dwelling. All right, I guess the other ones are sort of more for the traffic. I guess you're not going to address things like the, uh, increase in the traffic on the entire.
No, sir. Hold that for the traffic engineer, please.
Okay. So there's 13 parking spaces for the entire space, for the entire block, correct?
Correct.
And, and what is the, uh, can you tell me what the ordinance is? How many there should be for a, a 20-bedroom housing unit?
The traffic engineer will, will, uh, testify to that.
Okay, I'll hold it for the traffic engineer then. Um, the trash, uh, that little trash room, you, you feel that little trash room is going to be adequate for, uh, a 20-bedroom unit to hold all that trash?
It's a, it's a 12-unit building, and yes, it will be more than sufficient.
Right, it's 12 units, but 20, 20 bedrooms, not counting the fact that, uh, it's quite likely, uh, the ones that are designated.
Ask a question, please. Don't testify. Please ask a question.
Okay, um. All right, I, I believe that's all the question I have for now.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clem about her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Okay, we have Susan Lesnick again. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, no, I, I, I don't, uh, right now, I didn't lower my hand. I apologize.
Do any members of the public, please, uh, have any questions for Ms. Clem on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have MK back.
Great, thank you. Great. Um. Ms. Clem, do you know how much rent Mr. Sugar's planning to charge for a one-bedroom unit?
Sorry.
I do not know.
We're, we're not interested in fees right now. We're interested in structure of the building. So let's focus on the testimony that Ms. Clem provided.
All right, so, um, based on the hinge point of the driveway you've designed, it's less than required. That was identified in the SBRB meeting in, in March. So isn't it true that a driver exiting the garage onto Park Drive North has to breach the sidewalk and able to see oncoming traffic and/or any pedestrians that might be crossing?
That's for the man, that's for the traffic engineer.
Traffic engineer, okay. All right, so I'll hold that one. Okay. So, um, Ms. Clem, why does this building have to be so large?
Why does the building have to be so large? Um. I don't really have an answer to, it doesn't, um, doesn't really address any of the testimony that I gave.
Well, you've discussed the, the footprint and the design of the floors and the units, but why does it have to be so large? Why can't it be within the, the, the required ordinances of a B2 zone?
She testified, ma'am, she testified to what the building is, why it is like that, maybe for the applicant or the applicant's attorney. So let's try and question Ms. Clem on the architecture of the building, please.
Okay, um, so the, this, this, the decreased setback on the Park Drive North side. Won't that limit or, or block drivers' perception and sight distance as?
Man, that's for the traffic engineer. Sight, line, sight distance, traffic engineer, please.
All right, all right, I'll note that. All right, um, let me just, let's look at this, um. So, okay, I guess the straight retailer office that Mr. Wine just mentioned, that would, that, who should I ask about that?
Uh, applicant or Mr. Wine, applicant or Mr. Wine?
All right, the, the applicant or Mr. Wine. So, uh, you know, the, the point we were trying to say before is that like what Mr. Mills said about the, the such a small ratio of this building being, uh, of commercial use. The RSIS amendment that was passed in November 23, what are the specific provisions and what proportion of commercial use to residential use satisfies those provisions to potentially waive the RSIS requirements?
Uh, that'll be testified later.
Oh, I thought, Mr.
She's testifying about the structure of the building.
I thought you mentioned Mr. Wine.
Planner, the planner.
A planner, well, okay, then, um, I believe that's, that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clem about the testimony she provided? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet. Looks like there's no one to, oh, wait, I'm sorry, Jeannie Schultz? Jeannie Schultz, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Janine Schultz, I'm on Main Street, West Orange. Um, Ms. Clem had, um, testified that this structure of the building is, you know. Um, wait, it's, it's, wait, I'm sorry, blends with the, uh, surrounding area. Does, does it blend with the surrounding area as it is so much higher than the rest of the buildings around? And with the new, um, accent on the building, does it make the building taller than initially? Planned for?
So to answer the second question first, the height has remained the same and the top of the cornice has remained the same. Um, we have made it, uh, more traditional, but we have not changed the bulk size of the building. Um, now with reference to adjacent buildings, um, the building on the other side of Park Drive North is actually one story taller. It is a ground floor with three stories above it. And the next property is a ground floor with two stories above it. So there are, there are, um, many properties with similar height in the adjacent area.
Many or two.
I can continue down the line, but this is, and this is really about the architecture. The, the planner can talk about the, uh, the neighborhood.
And, and maybe Brittany, Brittany, maybe just, uh, for Ms. Schultz, um, the height is, the height is compliant with, uh, the requirement. Is that correct?
Yes, the height is, is compliant.
So it's a, it's, the, the variance that you're asking for is for, uh, half a story higher than what is allotted. Is that correct?
Correct, but the.
Then how is the height?
The height is allowed to be 35 feet and it is 34 foot, four inches.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions.
Thank you very much. Do any members, any other members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clem on her testimony this evening? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet. No more members of the public.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clem. Uh, we're gonna be done with you. And Mr. Wine, we're gonna take a, uh, 10-minute bio break for everybody, which I have been, uh, neglectful in the past. I want to make sure that I make everybody happy. Okay, 10 minutes, please. Thank you.
Yes, oh, so one of my friends texts me. Uh, he lives in Basking Ridge about somebody didn't, I gotta get it for everybody. An article on how wonderful Stone Hill is and how it took a non-used area and redeveloped it. And they they really did a great puff piece on it.
Stone, where is Stone Hill out in Basking Ridge?
No, no, here in West Orange, the uh.
Oh. Where the is. Where the what is?
Well, uh, uh, has got Executive Drive, the townhouse.
Oh, oh, okay.
Long two eighty.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that's what it was, uh.
Yeah, it's called Stone Hill.
It's, uh, I gotta get it up for everybody on the board. It was it was really a great puff piece.
Oh, cool.
We still think it should have been a taller building with a smaller footprint, but that's just me.
But here we are.
I don't know. You know what? My office, I'm only there a year now. It's, I just love the way that whole building is laid out, that whole area behind. So pretty. But you come in and there's the Schindler Art Center and you go around to our office building. It just.
Borland Drive, up Borland Drive.
Borland Drive, yeah, it's just beautiful.
And you got the lake.
Yeah, which I've never walked to, which I keep saying one of these days I'm gonna bring my sneakers, but.
When it cools off a little bit.
Yeah, exactly.
Today would have been nice if it wasn't raining.
Yeah. I'm a little scared of the wildlife up there. There's deer, there's those ugly turkey things. It's just they're.
The deer, the turkey things are dangerous. The deer are very innocuous.
Ugly turkeys, that sounds dangerous.
Diana, I've walked it in flip flops.
Oh, yeah, with the those ugly turkeys flying around? What are those things? All those vultures? They're scary. I wanna go with the security guard, then I'll go for a walk.
Or bring or bring beef with you, just throw it at them.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's what I wanted to do.
And then your hands smell like beef when you're done throwing it.
That's why we have air sightings also.
Yeah, that's right. To put the dead right, then the mountain lions, I don't know, I just.
Well, somebody.
I heard you, Mr. Alper. I heard you. That was funny. That's, that's.
Okay, just about waiting for a couple more people will get back on the record.
We still have double Benjamins here. I'm not sure who the second Benjamin is.
That admittedly, that's probably my client, but I don't intend for that person to testify.
Okay, can I change the name and just write applicant?
Yeah, just write applicant, yeah.
Okay, that sounds great.
I don't want you thinking that they're better looking than me, so I'm not gonna have them turn their camera on.
Okay, back on the record.
You're good to go.
Great, thank you. Back on the record, Mr. Wine, you have the floor, sir.
Sure, thank you, Chairman. Um, all right, so my next witness is Ali Rangwalla, our civil engineer.
Uh, would you raise your hand and identify, there you are, and identify yourself and be sworn in, please.
Mr. Rangwalla, uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Ali, since you were not sworn in last time, could you please provide the board with the benefit of your educational and professional background? And the status of your license as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Um, I have an undergraduate and a master's degree in engineering. Um, my master's degree, I I graduated it back in two thousand four. Um, I am licensed in the state of New Jersey, uh, and it's in good standing.
Great. Where did you get you? What school did you get your degrees from, sir?
Uh, I have my undergraduate from University of Mumbai in India and my master's from University of Louisiana at Lafayette.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if anybody has any questions, uh, seeing none, we will accept you as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. So Ali, if you can start by bringing up your plans and walking the board through, um, the proposed improvements that we're looking to make.
Sure. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes. And just, I'm sorry, before you do that, can you please confirm for the record that the plans you're going to be referencing, um, are the same plans dated, uh, you you can give the date. Were submitted at least ten days before this meeting for the board?
Uh, that is correct. These plans were submitted at least ten days before.
The date the plans were received was July twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Just they're they're all stamped in.
Okay, perfect. All right, so Ali, go right ahead.
All right, I I will start with the site plan. Um, I, I, um, we had a few questions regarding setbacks. So, uh, I can, I can go to with, uh, those questions or or just present my testimony in that reference.
Did you state the date of the plans, though? I just said the date that they were received by the town, but you need to get the date of the plans.
Sure, the site plan was last revised May sixteenth. There has been no change since the last time it, um, was submitted. And it's the same plan that we submitted, uh, ten, ten days ago.
And you are the maker of these plans?
Uh, yes, I am.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, should I proceed?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, so the setbacks, uh, um, on the south side, we have five, five feet, uh, five point two two as, uh, the minimum. Uh, going up to five point four two on the north, um, on the southwest side. Uh, on the south, on the north, uh, northwest side, uh, setback is eight point one six. And it goes all the way up to twelve point three two. On the north side of the setbacks are uh, well, thirteen feet, uh, I don't have exact dimension, but about thirteen feet, uh, throughout the throughout the front, uh, the the north side. And then on the, on the, on the east side, they're roughly around eleven and a half on the, on the northeast side. Going down to about, it's about the same on the, on the, on the southeast side. So, uh, 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 the, the building. So basically, uh, in existing condition, um, there was an, there was a house that was demolished. Uh, the proposed building, um, uh, is is shown here, um. The total in purpose, in existing condition, the total in purpose surface was three, three thousand five hundred forty-six square feet. And in the proposed condition, it is ten thousand one hundred forty-two square feet. Um. Uh, do we need to go with the?
Yeah, so Ali, why don't you, why don't you walk through, um, sheet by sheet, but let's start, I believe your next sheet, you're gonna go through the, uh, the grading, um, and then the drainage and utilities.
Okay, so as far as the grading is concerned, um, we, uh, the, uh, the proposed condition, uh, the site was graded i- in a way that we meet, uh, the, the proposed building architecture, all entrances, uh, and make sure, you know, i- i- it is, uh, compliant uh, with, uh, you know, it's ADA compliant. Um, uh, 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 also, this, 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 we are meeting existing slopes, uh, the, uh, at the property lines. Um. Uh, the, the, the sidewalk on the north park drives, uh, park nor, park drive north side, uh, the longitudinal slope is, uh, pretty much same as existing, except for in front of the building of the pedestrian entrance, we, we, we slowed down a little bit uh, to make it a little gentle. Uh, also, the cross slopes, um, are, um, about one, about two, no more than two percent, maximum two percent.
So Ali, the, uh, all the slopes related on the property related to this project, I think, uh, the architect testified to the building itself, but all these slopes are comply, are, are constructed to be ADA compliant, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right, go right ahead.
As long as there are no constraints, so, or with respect to the existing sidewalk longitudinal slope, I mean, that is what, where, where we had to meet existing.
Okay.
And then there were some questions with regards to the slopes, so I'll just quickly go through the slopes. Uh, I, I believe the maximum slope we have, uh, along the slope along Park, Park Drive North is fifteen, fifteen point eight percent. Okay, um, I'm gonna move on to uh, this, this here is the grading plan, uh, for, for inside the building. Um, and, um, I, I think Brittany had covered most of this. Uh, I'm gonna jump on to the, to the storm water management system, uh, storm water management design. Uh, on this plan, we, uh, this is the drainage area map plan. We're showing, uh, on the top here, the existing drainage area map. And on the bottom, we're showing the proposed drainage area map. Uh, I wanna, I wanna point down, point here that, you know, in existing condition uh, all the stormwater is, uh, is flowing, uh, you know, she flowing down uh, along, uh, along the property onto the sidewalk on Main Street. And, uh, there is no existing stormwater management system that I know of, uh, you know, there's no record of it. Um, so, um, in the proposed condition, what we designed is, uh, we are catching uh, ninety, more than ninety-five percent of, of this, uh, of all the, uh, stormwater that is, uh, you know, coming on, on this property. And, uh, storing it in underground chambers, which is slowly released, uh, into the city sewers, uh, connecting to the existing catch basin on, on, on the corner of Park Drive North and Main Street. Um, we made sure that, uh, so the, the stormwater system was designed for a hundred-year storm. And, um, uh, the, 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 uh, the wa, the volume of water flowing through the, through the stormwater management system in the proposed condition is, is less than what, uh, what is in existing condition.
So Ali, just, uh, to understand it in maybe, you know, relevant terms given last night's storm, uh, currently, if I understand correctly, the water would, uh, would just flow off the property in the existing drainage pattern, whereas what would happen under the proposed condition is it would get stored underground and as the, as the municipal system frees up, as the rain gets less and less, it would then slowly pipe it in, um, and release it into the municipal system, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So, uh, as, as the rain flows with the, uh, all the, you know, ninety, more than ninety-five percent of all the runoff from the site is going to the stormwater chambers and it will be, uh, the outlet, the outlet structure was designed to slowly release it, uh, to the, to the city sewers, so it, it should not overwhelm the, the city sewer system as it is doing currently.
Okay, so it's fair to say, or is it fair to say it would be a, an improvement on the existing condition today?
Yeah, it definitely is an improvement in existing condition, uh, uh, during, during heavy rain, full, uh, events. Um, more than likely, uh, I, I'm sure, and, uh, I, 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 I would expect some of the, some of the, uh, audience here would probably testify as well. But, uh, there, there's a lot of flooding or, or water running around the main street, uh, along the curb, which, uh, in the proposed condition, a lot of that would, would be resolved.
Okay, great. Okay, you can keep going.
All right, um, uh, so I'm, I'm just gonna quickly go through this stormwater management system. Uh, so basically, as, as you see here, uh, all of the most, all of the water flowing from the roof area is connected through, uh, storm drains and, 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 and eventually discharge into the, into, into the stormwater management system. Uh, additionally, we have inlets installed throughout the site that, uh, captures, uh, surface water coming from, uh, from coming, uh, the way the, the site is graded, so that way water flows towards inlets, which, which then, you know, uh, discharges into the stormwater system. Uh, the only sheet, the only flow that we, you know, that is coming from the slide, from the side onto the sidewalk would be a small area in the front, which with the nature, you know, the way it is slow, the, the, their slide is, side is sloping. Um, uh, you know, i- is basically just flowing on, on, onto the sidewalk, but, you know, more than ninety-five percent of it is is captured and, and, and stored within the store, uh, within the, uh, the storage chambers. Uh, here, this is the cross section of the, of the chambers. And I'm not gonna go into the details of the, the construction details. Um, just gonna go slightly, uh, expand the, the storage chambers that we are proposing. Uh, these are, um, uh, storm tech system, uh, it's an underground pipe storage system that basically, uh, uses connected pipes that eventually, you know, this, uh, are, are, you know, outletting into an outlet structure and then into the city, city sewers. Uh, uh, here we have the erosion control, control plants. Um, we are, uh, providing a concrete washout, uh, 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 on the north, north, uh, well, east, on the northwest side. They're also proposing, uh, most of the trees, um, uh, on the existing, on the existing side are, are supposed to be removed. Uh, we do have some tree protection that is proposed for trees that are slightly um, outside or, you know, or just very close to the property line, uh, so, you know, we, we have, as well as we are providing inlet protection for all the inlets near the, near the proposed improvements. Uh, the utility plan, um, uh, we are um, that there are some existing, uh, existing, uh, connections that we are proposing to ban, to be abandoned. We are proposing, um, new, uh, water, gas and sanitary sewer connections uh, shown from the proposed building onto, uh, onto the, uh, city, on, onto the, uh, sewers and, uh, you know, gas lines on, on Main Street. Uh, we did some, um, capacity calculations, which is also, which is also shown here on the drawing. Um, uh, this is for, this is for water, uh, water, uh, you know, water capacity. And we made sure that, you know, what we, what we are proposing, uh, is enough to, to service the building. Additionally, we are showing some, uh, service connection details, uh, that we, we obtained from the, the water company that services this, this area. I'm gonna jump onto the landscape, landscape plan. Um. We are proposing a lot of evergreen trees of different sizes and, uh, uh, different sizes. Uh, on the south side, um, we, we have proposed, um, some, uh, some tall, some evergreen trees that have, that go roughly about four feet in spread and fifteen to twenty feet high. Uh, they, they should provide enough shading for, or, you know, uh, basically this is along the entire width of the, the existing building on the, on the neighboring property and should provide shading, you know, uh, at least, uh, for the first floor, uh, uh, to, to the proposed building. Uh, in addition, we are proposing, uh, uh, some shrubs, uh, you know, that are, you know, that spread, uh, roughly about eight feet in diameter and about eight feet high. Also, we are proposing some, uh, some trees of different sizes, um, along, along the west side of the property. On the, on the, uh, on the north side, along Park Drive North, we are proposing some shrubs and then, uh, on the on the, on the, on the east side, we are proposing, um, uh, some, uh, golden spreaders, I'm sorry, um, uh, some Bosn-Ivy, uh, which are crawlers along the, along the retaining wall. Uh, we removed all the landscape.
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, in the previous submission, we had proposed some, some grass uh, al- along, you know, in between the entrances, we, uh, as recommended by the board, we removed, we removed the grass strips and I'm sorry, not, not by the board, let, let me correct myself, as recommended by the township previously, uh, we removed and replaced it with concrete.
Ali, I was just gonna ask if, uh, if you can confirm, so I think you showed some evergreens, uh, along the residential property lines, is that correct?
That is correct, and, uh, these are, uh, all, you know, different, uh, sizes, uh, so more, I think, uh, the one marked CLE go all, all the way up to um, eight feet, uh, thirty, uh, sorry, eight to ten feet high. Uh, sorry, thirteen to twenty feet height and, uh, they spread to, up to five to eight feet, uh, uh, in, in width.
All right, you can go.
Also, we have, yeah, we have some additional, uh, evergreen trees, um, that, you know, that, that are eight to ten feet high and spread, uh, four to five feet. Now, the planned schedule does provide all the details, including the, the botanical name and the common name for, for these trees and shrubs we are proposing. I'm gonna move on to the lighting plan. Um, the, uh, we made sure to, to, uh, comply with the, the township requirements, so not have more than zero point five foot candles, uh, of bleed outside the, outside the property lines. Um, there, uh, there are, um, uh, we also proposed lighting inside the parking garage, uh, but, uh, the parking garage is fully covered, so we don't expect any, any. the parking garage is fully covered, so we don't expect any any lighting overflowing of the garage except when the garage doors are opening. And then finally, the the vehicle turning templates, I would let the traffic engineer go into details for this plan.
Okay. All right, so Ali, I think that that concludes my direct examination. You have obviously gone through everything in quite a lot of detail, so Chairman, I would turn over this witness to the board.
Thank you. So for the first question, Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Andrew, for your presentation and talking about the lighting, which was one of my questions. The outdoor lighting and not counting the underground parking, but will there be any impact on the neighborhood's lighting and any lighting pollution coming from any additional lighting that you're putting on the outside of this building?
So now, as we can see here, we we, the maximum foot candles we have along the property line is zero point three, which is way below the township requirement of zero point five foot candles.
Okay, the other question, sir, is, I know it's been asked by a number of the members, but the emergency sounding system and the lighting for the garage for pedestrian warning. I noticed the picture and the rendering has it flat against the building. I don't know how far it's coming out. But would there be consideration to making it coming, sticking out, so pedestrians coming up or down could see it and see the warning, because when they're up against a building, you know, people aren't always looking towards the building, but they're looking in front of them. Would, is that a consideration? And is it an audible alarm that would be within the confines of the audible levels of noise based upon our noise ordinance?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the traffic engineer answer that question with respect to, you know, the the space, the location of the warning, the the warning light.
Right, my my question is that, so when the door is, you know, open, that with pedestrians and even though the cars are coming, they will be notified that there was a potential car coming out of the parking lot. And but when I saw the rendering, it seems the rendering of that alert sign is flat against the building. My question is, could it be turned, you know, sideways so that pedestrians could see it from coming down or going up?
Mr. Vice Chair, do you mean some type of blade sign, for example?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Benjamin, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. No problem, I was just gonna ask if you meant some type of blade sign. I've seen them before, so Ali, would it be fair to ask, is is the type of sign something we can look into and and provide the board another detail if such a thing exists?
Yeah, we we could certainly provide more details of the sign that is proposed. But yeah, yeah, that's, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, we'll we'll look into it. I I I don't see that as an issue.
Thank you, Mr. One, I appreciate that. Will there be sufficient lighting around the garage entrance exit so that it's, you know, visible, that it's not too dark? So even with morning, you know, will people see that it is a garage and people will see cars, you know, entering and exiting, especially exiting the property?
So to answer that question, I I do believe that, you know, as as the as the cars come in and out and the garage doors, you know, the garage doors open, there there should be enough lighting from the garage that, you know, that will illuminate the sidewalk in front of it.
Okay, and and my last question is, as the, have you shown your lighting plans for the outside of the building to the traffic engineer?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Moles will have five a question about, you know, traffic coming, you know, towards the building on Main Street, that the lighting will not distract the drivers from driving, you know, carefully down Main Street. Right. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Greeno. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do. Gonna work in reverse order. Mister, and I and I hope I pronounced your name properly, Mr. Rangwalla?
Yes, you did.
The west side and the south side of the building, the proposed building, have landscaping. That's meant to provide some shade, I guess, between the adjacent properties?
That is correct.
It looks on your drawing, and the one that I'm looking at on my computer as well, that they completely block the entire width of the setback. Is that an accurate depiction? Particularly on the south side?
That is correct. These are somewhat drawn to scale. But, you know, yes, once they are mature, they would be around this size.
Is, so it it would be difficult for someone to walk behind there?
You mean for maintaining?
Either for maintaining, but also in emergency circumstances. If that south side of the building had to be accessed by emergency personnel for any reason, or the west side of the building, I'll get to the size of the width of the concrete walkway. But if the south side had to be accessed for any reason, it's going to be very difficult. A retaining wall would have to be scaled and then you've got to traverse the trees that are gonna block the entire width. At least that's the way it looks to me. Am I, am I not, am I seeing that correctly?
Yeah, but the thing is, you know, there is also sidewalk continuing outside the, I mean, not sidewalk, but the grass continuing outside of the property line. So the purpose for these trees was to mainly and, you know, take care of the concerns for some from some of the neighbors, to shade the property, the proposed property. But, you know, as far as, as far as law, you know, for having enough space to more work go around, there is grass behind the property line as well. So the the, we are meeting existing grades at at the property line.
I think on the south side, there's a fence on the townhome property that is adjacent to the proposed building?
That, yeah, that is correct. Oh, yeah, I was referring to them, to the, to the west side, but yes, on the south side, there is a fence. But look, I mean, that's the reason why we propose some shrubs instead of trees and and the trees that we propose are quite narrow in in spread to provide some space for, you know, people to go around. While it is shading the, shading the problem.
Yeah, that to me, and I'll defer to our retired fire chief, but that to me seems like it would be difficult for emergency personnel to access on the south side of the building. If we look at the west side of the building, there's a concrete walkway that connects Park Drive North to the fire, to the stairwell at the southwest corner of the building. How wide is that walkway?
That is five feet.
Five feet?
Correct.
And so the the width, the the width of the setback between the northwest corner and the property line is is how much?
Just a moment, let me. The northwest side and the property line?
Yes.
Eight feet sixteen and eight, eight point one six feet.
Okay, and all right, let me let me move on to another aspect of my questions. The stormwater management that you proposed, you said it's built for a hundred year storm and it would store some of the water until to to kind of moderate the flow into the township system, is that right?
That is correct, yeah.
So in a week like we've had this week where you have multiple days of rain, if that becomes overwhelmed, it will still go into, it will flood the existing township system, is that right?
I wouldn't say this, it would flood. I mean, it it, we do have an overflow, you know, that you know, it would still hold the water for up to, you know, forty, I I I'd have to get the number, but up to twenty, twenty-four to forty-eight hours and then start overflowing into the into city sewers.
So up to two days, you know, of a steady rain would be able to be held and then after that it would overflow into the sewer system or stormwater system?
Well, yeah, so we, the way we control the flow is, yeah, you know, there is a, there is the outlet structure is raised, you know, in a way so that it would reduce or, you know, it will limit the the flow into the city sewers to a certain volume per second.
There is, when you did your calculations, did you include in that calculation the brook that is at the top of Park Drive North? And how that brook regularly overflows and goes down Park Drive North?
No, our calculations were limited to the area within the property lines.
So there, yeah, there's water that comes through there that is, you know, when we have heavy rain, the brook overflows and it just flows right down that hill, affecting all of those properties as, you know, in the current condition. So it's not just the actual rainfall that this property would have to manage at the bottom of that hill. It's also the overflow from the rainfall that starts at the top of the hill and frequently comes down through Park Drive North. I don't know if our planner or if our engineer will be able to to address that or ask better questions. I'm a layman. But that is a concern for me because there's already an overflow of water coming down that hill.
Council President, can I, can I, can I ask a question? Because I think it's relevant. Ali, is it fair to say that obviously that water that flows from the brook that goes, you know, down the street is not gonna be captured? But if that water were to flow onto our property, would that also collect in our drainage system?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
First, I'm all making into our property. I'm not sure how that group flows, but, you know, if if there's any water coming onto the sidewalk, it is possible that some of that water will come into the inlets that we provided.
Thank you for that clarification, and and I think it's just important also to understand that that flow would just normally hit the our current stormwater management system, which may, you know, impact your calculations on how much from this property our current system can handle before it's overwhelmed.
I just wanted to, you know, add to that a little bit. Like I said before, we we looked at two-year, ten-year and a hundred-year storm. And, you know, the the runoff calculation in the proposed condition is less than existing condition.
Got it. I appreciate that. I did hear that testimony as well. Thank you for that. With regard to the sidewalk on the Main Street side, I think you testified that, and I, and I could be wrong, but I think that, how how wide are the sidewalks on the Main Street side?
So it's just a moment, it's about six, six feet three, six point three feet from the property line plus, you know, additional five feet of concrete beyond the property line into the property. Going down to five point one six feet to where it meets the retaining wall, the proposed retaining wall.
Is that, and so is that the low, is that the shortest distance, five point one six, or is that just where it meets the retaining wall?
That is the shortest distance. I I believe it it goes all the way up to six point oh eight at the south side of the property.
And is that ADA compliant, the five point one sixty?
Yes, it is. ADA requires five feet.
Okay. So on the alarm on Park Drive North for the garage, how far away from the alarm is it normally audible?
I'm sorry, I I I don't understand the question.
Is there a distance from the alarm that you normally should be able to hear it? Or is there, is there a distance from the alarm? What is the maximum distance from the alarm that you should be able to hear the alarm?
I I'm not sure of that answer of the question, actually. I'm not sure of the answer for that question.
Yeah, the the concern is about noise pollution. There is a, an apartment building across the street from that garage directly across the street, and then there are some homes that are nearby as well, and and there were some concerns about the noise. So it has to be loud enough to warn pedestrians that are approaching, and I would assume it would, they would have to be, you know, able to hear it from some distance so that they would pay attention. I don't, I don't know what that distance is, and I'm trying to ascertain that. Can you help me understand that better?
Um, actually, yeah, I think the architect answered some part of that question. I'm not familiar with with this requirement, but, you know, maybe the traffic engineer would maybe able to answer that.
Yeah, Council President, we could look into if there's a decibel listed with the particular model. I know the vice chair had actually asked for a different model, if at all possible, so we can look into that. And not to be dismissive, but suffice it to say, it would obviously have to serve its purpose while still maintaining compliance with the township's noise requirements at property lines.
Thank you. I think that, just let me double check my notes. I think that's it for me for now. Mr. Chair, I may have to come back with additional questions, but that's it for me.
Thank Council President Rutherford. Mr. Alper.
Thank you. Most of my questions are about setbacks, and I think they're really for the planner or whoever's gonna be presenting on variances. But I did wanna check one thing from something you said. In fact, it's on the sheet you're on right now, on the Park Drive North side, where it shows the five point one four, five foot, five point one four feet setback. I think when you were reading these off, you said something about eleven feet and not five point one four, but I think five point one four is what shows to the right on the variance table. So I just wanted to check and see what what was what on that.
Well, five point, five point one four is the setback. Yes, that is correct. Of the, you know, the building from the property line on on the north side.
Okay, I, when when you read it off, I thought you said eleven or twelve feet there. You may have just misspoke or I may have misheard, but I just wanted to make sure I I was right, that it was five feet and change there. Okay.
Mr. Alper, I think, because I I actually think I heard the same thing you did when Mr. Rangwalla was testifying. I think he was speaking to the actual street. He was including the sidewalk width in that calculation, but the number shown there is to the property line.
Okay, um, I don't think I have anything else from an engineering perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Mr. Wilks.
Um, yes, this is for the attorney very quickly. I, I mean, we're all seem very concerned about the the noise pollution aspect of this. Can you guarantee that the traffic engineer is definitely gonna be able to answer that question? Because it seems like everybody's kind of passing it back and forth.
I I can't guarantee that he can answer it, but what I can guarantee is that we will do what we can to get an answer. Certainly, if if we don't conclude our presentation this evening, it's easy to be able to get that answer. At of next time, if we are looking to conclude by this evening, I would hope that either our traffic engineer or our planner could answer that question.
Well, we de- I I, we definitely need that answer.
Understood, understood.
The residents and just as Council President Rutherford stated, there is an apartment building across the street. There are two residents right next to the property. So that is extremely important and we need to have that answered equitably, no matter what. So I just want to make, because I don't, because I don't wanna, we keep asking it and it keeps coming with everybody and it keeps getting pushed back, but, okay. As long as we, as long as we have that understood. Now, if I'm can, back to the engineer, can you give me the distance of the garage? So the garage is gonna be pretty much it's not gonna be pushed further back to where the property line is now, are you saying that? Or is it kind of, or you guys gonna push it back a little? Or is it kind of, or is you guys going to push it back a little bit? Because I'm concerned about people traveling east on Main Street, and when they make a right turn up that street, they have to, o- only parking is allowed on the right side of that street, or park, I believe it's Park North, the only right side. So they have to kind of go towards that that area, um, towards the garage. It seems a little tight there, um, can you give me the distance there, or you guys, um, is that something for the traffic engineer? Because I'm just very concerned about that, when people traveling east up Main Street to make a right, they have to pretty much go more towards the, um, more towards your building to really get a good turn in that area.
So I I'm just trying to understand, are you, did you, did you mean traveling north on me, you speak?
Um, okay, north, we're traveling towards the Duncan Donors there, north, maybe I got my directions mixed up?
Yeah, so Main Street is north-south here.
Okay.
Um, so what was the question again, um?
So is it making a right on Park, Park Drive North?
Ma- ma- making a left from Main Street onto Park.
No, making a right the opposite way.
Also coming south, Ali.
Coming south then.
Coming south from the proposed building onto Park Drive North?
Correct.
No, coming, hold on, hold on.
This is the one-way street, I'm just trying to say.
Hold, hold on, Ali, I I I got it, coming south on Main Street towards Park Drive North. Um, Mr. Wilks, correct me if I'm wrong, coming south towards the, towards Park Drive North and making a right onto Park Drive North.
Correct.
Okay, okay, making a right on the Park Drive North, okay?
Well, I was asking is the driveway that you guys are proposing with the door, is that, are you, is it where the property line is at currently, or is it going to be pushed back to allow peop- to allow those cars to come out? That is not a large street. And if there's parking on the other side, it, you know, as far as safety reasons, I just, I'm a little concerned about that area with somebody making a right, even a right or a left up to Parkway, because you're going back to a residential area. Coming through there, you, I'm just asking, is the driveway that's currently proposed in the, in the place where, I mean, in other words, you're not going to push back the property anymore to accommodate the door? It's going to be right kind of where the property line is currently now?
Ali, how far setback is the door, I think is the question, am I right, Mr. Wilks?
Yeah, let's just work with that then.
Yeah, so I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be dismiss, I'm just trying.
No, 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 I'm I'm agreeing, no, I, I just want, I want to be sure I'm being understood too as well. So that's fine, I just wanted to s- see if it was being, if it was.
So the, the door is roughly five point three feet from the property line.
From the property line.
The building, uh, five point three feet on the east side and five point seven two on the west side.
Okay, now, everybody seems to have, as far as the residence, is everybody's going to have a parking space assigned to them? Or is it part of the package? Like, how is the parking going to be set up?
So I, yeah, I believe that that would be the question for the traffic engineer.
Well, for the traffic engineer, the parking, and who assigns it a parking? Because right now, it seems like, based on twelve apartments, twelve spaces, I'm gonna go with the simple math of one equals one. Um, that one apartment equals one space, I'm just concerned about, um, if they have company, anybody more, anybody else in the apartment has more than one car, where does that parking go? Where do, where does that overflow go? Because it's in that area, fairly tight as it is, parking is a major concern, and I'm just wondering where those people would go.
Yeah, e- either this planner, I guess, or the side, or the traffic engineer.
All right, um. Yeah, I'm just, I mean, it just seems like one question, I mean, I'm, it's getting pushed back to the next person to the next person. Um, let me see here if there's anything else that I may have for you right now. Well, you know, I'll, I'll leave it open if I have to come back, but in the essence of the meeting, um, those are all my questions currently right now, Dr. Bagel.
Great, um, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, can you go, can you explain on the grading plan? How will the car be oriented when it's exiting? I- is it a sort of a flat spot there, or are they going to be tilted a little bit to their right?
It it will be tilted, correct.
Can't hear you.
Yes, it is slightly tilted, it was right, if you look at the grading plan, uh, 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 it's two forty nine point two six on the east side and two forty seven point oh nine on the, on the west side.
So it's relatively low.
It is slightly correct.
Right, okay, okay, um. And the lighting, can you go back to the lighting diagram? It looked like you had like point one foot candles along that walkway along the uh west side. Is there enough lighting in that walkway between Park Drive and the rear? Yeah, is there enough lighting in that section?
So, um, I'm not sure, I mean, you know, we made sure that we met the, you know, the lighting uh requirements at the property line, uh, I was using the lighting from the architectural plans and making sure that, you know, those met the requirements, um.
You got a lot of zeros, is that, is that enough lighting, zero lighting?
There are no lighting proposed, there are no wall-mounted lighting proposed on this side of the, of the building.
How high is?
Lighting proposed is on.
So the the walkway itself, is that relatively level and flat?
The wa- walkway, no, it is basically slightly sloping up. Uh, if you look at the grid plan, yes, correct, we're going towards the staircase.
Okay, how about the retaining wall? Is it the same height along the whole length, or is it very short out of the Park Drive?
Yeah, it it is, um, and let me just go back to the grading plan, but yeah, it it's different, um. Yeah, so it it starts with, uh, uh, you know, just, just a little over, uh, just less, less, uh, under the, under a foot on the, on the north side, and then go up to three point, three and a half feet, or, uh, yeah, just about a little over three feet, uh, and then coming down uh to like a foot and a half on, towards the staircase.
With all the landscaping that's there, would you be able to put some sort of lights along either the building or the wall or bollards or something to light that walkway a little better?
Yeah, we could certainly consider that, yes.
Okay. All right, and then, uh, yeah, the rest is for the traffic, and thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Klein? Oh? Mr. Klein?
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, good, Mr. Smoraldo.
Yes, um, so the first thing I want to address is, uh, Council President um was requesting um some opinion on the south side of the property um regards to access trees and things. So how close is the setback from, is this building from the property line? Because I'm looking at a Google map picture also at the same time, so, um, so how far is that setback proposed from the property next door?
Yes, you you talked about from the property line?
Yeah, from the property line to that where it says five twenty-two to that property line, that's the five, five feet twenty-two, five point two feet.
Five point two two, correct.
All right, and in the picture I'm looking at, there's a, there's a s- uh, a fence that's there from the property next door, I believe. So, um, and you're not going to have any kind of staircase there getting from the, from Main Street up?
No.
Okay, there's not going to be.
There is no access to this side of the buil- of the property from Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a retaining wall, and we are meeting existing retaining wall at at the property line.
Okay, so there won't be any sidewalk, no access or anything like that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, and I'm looking at the picture from the house next door, there's a big old six-foot fence there anyway. I I, I, it's a satisfy, I think, the Council President's question, I think that's going to be something that if, if realistically, if operations had to go from that side of the, the building, it's going to be a long-term operation, and it probably unfortunately be more of a defensive point at that, at that point, so. You know, I think that i- it's a concern, but I I think, um, the access to the staircases, both in the front and back, will probably more of a uh, well, from a tactical standpoint, it's probably more what what we'd have to be worried about, and including wherever the stamp pipe hookup is for the sprinkler system, that that would be my concerns. So I think, um, so I hope that could satisfy your, uh, your question, Council President, but, um, yeah, that would be something that would be more of a, a later on in the event type of thing, that we'd have to worry about setting up over there. Um, so, um, my other question is on Park Drive North, um, just, I I mean, you may have said it before, I just want to, uh, what is the width of the street itself there, uh, across from the the garage? Yeah, uh, from the setback and everything else was the.
So the sidewalk width is is five feet, uh, uh, oh, sorry, seven, seven feet two, seven point two feet?
Yeah, uh, from that distance to across the street, that's, um, um, you just told me that you have that measurement, though, I have to wait.
Are you talking curb to curb?
Yeah, curb to curb, please.
Yeah, it's about twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet, okay, um. I think the rest of my questions, I'm going, uh, I, I think I defer the rest of my questions to Mr. Hess, let him, um, uh, tell us more about his expertise. I I'm I'm curious to the flow of the water, as is several members are, um, and I, I'm, I'm happy to hear about the vaults or whatever we can to help offset the water, um. But, um, yeah, I just want to make sure that, um, Mr. Hess can address that for us from an engineering standpoint, because those, the the flows and calculations are not my thing, so, so, all right, that's it, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smoraldo, Mr. Cardoza.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh, my fellow board members have asked some excellent questions, I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Caprur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, just a few questions, um, along Park Drive North. Um, can you, I I know that, uh, Mr. Klein, I think, asked this question already, can you say again, what is, what's the slope at the, the driveway? Or the, the entryway to the garage, rather, um, ki- kind of the, the cross, the cross-slope there, and then also like the slope down on the sidewalk, uh, along Park Drive North?
Yeah, the slope down is about fifteen feet, uh, uh, but the cross-slope, uh, is one point, uh, one point, uh, sorry, zero, zero point five feet on the sidewalk.
Um, so I mean, is it, is it like six percent? Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense for, um.
I'm sorry, I I I misspoke, it's zero point five percent cross-slope and seven point eight percent, uh, cross-slope, uh, longitudinal slope in front of the building entrance. And then pretty much the rest of, uh, the sidewalk, the longitudinal slope is roughly about fifteen, fifteen point eight, you know, sixteen percent.
And.
Which is, which is what is in existing condition, we are, we are basically matching existing.
Um, is, is there any issue with, um, like ADA compliance with those slopes?
So ADA, basically, in a, you know, in existing condition, A- ADA, you know, there's no way we can meet those, uh, ADA does not, uh, you know, gives us a relief, you know, because the, the existing sidewalk roadway itself is, 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 you know, is that steep, so there's nothing can be done to make it ADA compliant. So that, you know, it, there is a relief that, you know, since we are ma- me- meeting existing.
And, okay, do you, I mean, do you think it would be challenging for a driver? I, that, maybe this is a question for traffic, traffic engineer, would it be, you know, if if there is like a close to an eight percent slope for a driver that's exiting the, the, um, garage, is that challenging? Um.
Yeah, I would, I would defer that question to the traffic engineer, it would be better to answer.
Okay, um, just a, a couple of questions on, on drainage, um, can you, uh, do you have a plan at this point for like roof drainage, where, you know, where it's, um, connecting to your system?
Um, so basically, if you look at, if you look at the, the drawings, all of the downspouts from the roof are connected to, um, uh, you know, to the stormwater system. Uh, we don't have like intricate details of them, but you know, that, that is what would be proposed for all the downspouts coming from the roof to be connected to the stormwater system.
Okay, and can you talk a bit more about the, um, the chamber system that you're, um, proposing, like, is that, um, do you have something, i- is that, I I feel like I've typically seen those under, um, like parking lots. Do you, have you used them before in your, in your, um, experience, like, under parking garages or under structures?
That, yes, we, we have used that extensively for, uh, for these type of, you know, uh, applications. Yeah, these are, these are very, uh, popular, um, uh, StormTech system is one of the best systems that could be used for, in, you know, for this, uh, situation.
Okay, um, I have no further questions at this time, thanks.
That was me, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I have a couple, if, uh, if that's okay.
So right ahead.
Mr. Rangwalla, the first question I have is, as you're entering the parking, uh, garage, um, can you discuss access to the very first parking space on the right? That's in the northeast corner, the, or the northwest corner of the building.
As, as, as you, as you can see, um, on this drawing, we provided a, a vehicle maneuvering simulation. Uh, the, you know, we were showing a vehicle backing into the spot, and, you know, without, you know, making multiple moves. So this is basically the most restrictive, um, uh, maneuver, uh, you know, i- it is basically be able to back up into the spot in one shot. And the vehicle we use is a Ford Explorer, which is, you know, possibly one of the big SUVs um, that, you know, that are, that is used currently, so.
Well, your, your turning movement plan, which I believe is sheet, um, seventeen, shows, shows the Explorer entering the site, but it doesn't show how they're getting into that parking space.
Oh, you mean exiting?
Well, no, how, how does it enter the parking space? It, it shows the vehicle turning into the access driveway, but it doesn't show further maneuvers, is that a backup maneuver?
Yeah, that's, if you see the shaded, the shaded maneuver.
I don't see any shading on the plan.
I, I, are you able to see my screen, or, I, I'm not sure if it's clear?
Then, then the print that I received was run too light, because I don't, I don't have any shading on the drawings that I.
So this is how the simulation, you know, basically provides shaded, uh, uh, shaded, um, lines, and we can certainly, you know, make it a little bit more elaborate, um, uh, in the reprint, but yeah, uh, if, if you look on the screen, um.
All right, I can see it on your plan. I I just couldn't see it on mine, so then the question I have is, since you're backing in, how's that vehicle getting out?
So it, it could pretty much, you know, use the same maneuver to come out, coming out back of the spot should be much more easier than backing into it.
Well, but if he's, if you backed into the spot, then when you, if you try to repeat that maneuver, you're not going to back out onto Park Drive North, are you?
No, 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 it is back, it is coming forward, oh, well, you, that, that's a good question, um. I, you know, basically, I would, I would need to maybe defer that to the traffic engineer as well, but, you know, I, I.
I would like to see the turning movement plan modified to not only show how you're getting in wi- with the backup movement, but how you're going to get out of that space. Um, because I have concerns about that.
Mr. Hess, we can have that run, I mean, I am certainly not a traffic engineer, I would imagine you would just pull forward, then back up in a K-turn and then front out, but we can certainly model that.
Okay, the, uh.
Yeah, you're good.
Second question I have is on the, um, land state plan that you have provided. Um, if you could call that up, please, that would be sheet fifteen. Okay, so the, the plan that I received in the latest set, um, if you look along the Wesley property line, I'm showing, starting at the, uh, southerly side of the. if you look along the Wesley property line, I'm showing, starting at the, uh, southerly side of the property, I'm showing four boxwoods, three, uh, cleft rock, and another four boxwoods, so I don't sh- I'm not showing on the plans that I just received the same landscaping that you have, nor do I have this, is the same landscaping shown along the southerly property line.
Yeah, I believe these were the plans that I had, um, distributed to, to you, Ben, and that, you know, these were shared whatever, ten, ten days ago, so I'm not sure which plans you're looking at, Mr. Hess.
What's the latest revision date on the plan you have on the screen now?
So this is July twenty-one.
Okay, the plan that I received in the set on July twenty-ninth, that stated the revision date is May sixteenth, so we didn't receive, we didn't receive the latest plans.
Mr. Hess, we'll certainly look into that, uh, I, these are what we submitted to the Board Secretary, but it could always be that, uh, they didn't make it in your direction.
Okay, on the, and I'll raise the same question then about the, um, sheet, the drainage area map sheet six. Um, I don't know if that's changed, that also has that same revision date of May sixteenth. The concern I have is you have the hydrographs that show the existing condition runoff and the proposed condition runoff, but they don't take into account what's happening with the storm chamber system, so I don't see any information on reductions. All I see is that under post-development, for the two ten and hundred year storms, the, uh, rainfall rates are increased, which we would expect post-development, but what's happening with the, um, what happened, what's happening with the storm chamber system? I don't have any information on the outlet structure or any of the, uh, post-development flows being discharged from the site.
Yeah, I can certainly provide you, so this is just an excerpt, uh, of the storm, uh, you know, stormwater, uh, uh, analysis. I can provide you a full report that includes, uh, you know, all the information, including, uh, the calculations with, with, uh, stormwater management system and outlet structure.
We, we definitely need that because I have not seen a stormwater report for this system, so I don't know how, um, what the reductions are gonna be and how the system's gonna operate.
Understood.
Okay, and then the last question I have is on the, let me get the sheet. So one of the things we had asked for is calculations of the, uh, sanitary sewer flows, so that the, um, Municipal Engineers Office can make a determination as to whether or not there's adequate capacity. On sheet thirteen, which is the later revision date, July second, um, that only shows sewer demand, but there's no calculations or anything telling us how that was determined. Um, so we, we will need you to submit calculations showing how you determine the sewer demand. You know, is it for the, a commercial, is it based on point one gallons per day per square foot? Um, how did you base it on the residential? Was it based on flows per apartment? We need to see those calc- the actual calculations, not just, um, a statement saying the residential flow is twenty-four hundred gallons and the non-residential is ninety.
So we use this, uh, uh, the spreadsheet that we, we received, you know, from American Water Company, um, uh, you know, that has detailed calculations, uh, this is just a summary of that calculation, I can certainly send you to the, the, the spreadsheet that includes, you know, details of how this summary, uh, calculations were, were, you know, were.
Yeah, we, we definitely, the, uh, Municipal Engineers Office needs that detailed calculation sheet.
Okay.
Mr. Hess, could I just, and Chairman, can I just jump in, piggyback on this question, cause I do have something concerned with that.
Mrs. Smirrada, go right ahead.
Uh, Mr. Hess, I, I know you're, you're dealing with, with our Director Carvallo with this, with the store, um, with the sewer system, but also the storm management is also a concern. Uh, we have, um, I know you're, you're somewhat intimate with some of the issues we have in and around the area, is, um, is, are calculations required for that too, for the stormwater management, for the, the director? I'm just asking this question as general because we have some, we have some concerns with, uh, stormwater management, um.
Well, I, I absolutely think that she would wanna see copies, yes.
Okay, and, and even for the stormwater, not just the sewer, right?
She, right, exactly, she could get, when, um, when the engineer submits his, uh, detailed uh, drainage report, certainly, we can provide, have a copy provided to her.
Yeah, I'd like to see that happen, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a greater problem than just this one specific paper.
Oh, I agree.
Just to make sure, just to make sure I follow that, is that a, a, something that we would submit or something that once we file with, uh, with the Board Secretary, it would, it would be flipped over?
I'm just looking to see what the calculations of what you're, you're presenting here, these particular calculations of stormwater map, if it somehow get forwarded to our engineer so she can use those calculations in the grand scheme of all her calculations. If, if it's possible, and I, and again, I defer to the engineers, cause this is way beyond my scope of, of expertise, so, but I, I know having conversations with her a, a lot lately, um, we, we have a big concern with stormwater management within town, and every area impacts another area, so.
And, Mr. Wine, when you submit it to the board, uh, the Board Secretary distributes it, and I'm sure that, um, the Municipal Engineer is on that distribution list.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Wine, I'm not looking for you to solve the entire town's problem, unless you're, you're willing to do so, uh, but, uh, you know, we just, it's just that one little corner, that one area, because that, the direction of flow, I believe, goes south from there, and, um, we've, you know, dealing with our, my DPW department for years and, and flooded basements along Main Street, things of that nature, it, it becomes a, a great concern further downstream, so to speak, so. All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's the last of my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions on this, uh, uh, experts testimony, do any men of the public have any questions on this experts testimony, please raise your hand and be identified?
Chairman, we have, uh, Zaiyabeth is asking a question or has her?
Uh, Township Engineer Zaiyabeth Carvallo, please. Um, do we have, uh, Ms. McGovern, do we have to swear in, Ms. Carvallo?
Um, Ms. Car- my, yeah, Ms. Carbio, yeah, I think you're just asking questions, or do you wanna give some information? You know what, let's just swear you in in case you wanna give some information, okay? If you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do swear.
Thank you.
Uh, I do have one question for the engineer. Uh, regarding the, uh, stormwater management plan, I do notice that none of the, uh, existing, uh, stormwater structures along Main Street, none of the inverts are provided for none of the, uh, inlets. Is there a way that the, uh, inward can be provided, so we know how deep they are, and also since you're gonna be tying into our system and you're gonna be discharging downstream, and we know that right across the street is in the floodplain, can you please calculate the, uh, capacity of the pipe where you're discharging to, so that we know exactly how much is being discharged based on your routing, which is what was being asked from, uh, Mr. Hess?
Okay, so, uh, I, I, I understand you had two questions, you needed the inward, um, for, uh, the existing storm sewer, uh, along Park Drive North, um, uh, is that correct?
Yes, if you notice that the existing storm sewer on Main Street, if you submit, you provide us the grade elevation on the plans, which is like, believe, two forty-two point six seven. There are no inverse, there is no direction of the existing pipes or the existing, um, storm sewer, so we would like to, to calculate what the downstream capacity of the pipes that you're tying into have, okay?
So, uh, yeah, okay, so, uh, we, we did, you know, do an offer request, uh, for getting record drawings of the existing sewers, we didn't really get any information. Um, I know our surveyor tried to access the manholes, they could, you know, it was so clogged, or the in- the inlets was look so clogged, they couldn't capture the inward information, but.
You can call our DPW department and we could make arrangements for you to be able to obtain with your surveyor what is needed, in order to be able to obtain the slopes and the velocities and capacity of the pipes. Because once you do your routing and you're able to figure out how much flow is coming out for the two ten and a hundred year storms, we'll be able to figure out how much actually can you discharge into these pipes?
Yeah, so li- like I said previously, right, we, uh, we are making sure that, um, the discharge from the proposed, uh, conditions are less than existing conditions, so in, in existing conditions, you know, everything is flowing along the street into the inlets, or into the city sewers, we are making sure that the discharge in proposed conditions is less than that. Uh, so I don't, uh, expect, you know, this to make, uh, the situation any worse than it is.
I understand, like, if the downstream pipe doesn't have enough capacity, unless at all you have this X number of CFS that you can discharge, that means that your system will have to be slightly larger in order to detain on site what the pipe cannot handle.
Yeah, so, again, you know, to answer your question, it's my understanding that everything along Main Street and along Park Drive North is captured into inlets on the roadways and going into the city sewers. So.
I'm referring, the discharge is coming from the site, that's what I'm referring to, because when you're gonna discharge in from your detention system, your underground detention system, that's gonna be basically concentrated flow.
Yeah, uh, that's true, but we're, we're gonna make sure that, uh, the CFS, uh, or the, you know, cubic feet per second in proposed condition coming from the StormTech system will be less than the CFS that is currently coming from the site.
I understand, but just make sure that you take into account what the capacity of the pipe is where you're discharging to. Another question is the, uh, the inspection ports. Are they large enough for the, to the inspections and for to do the maintenance plan for this, uh, underground detention system? Is there a, that, uh, a maintenance plan for this?
Uh, yes, uh, we have all that information in the detail sheet, uh, on, on sheet ten. It, it is, uh.
Some details, I'm talking about the stormwater maintenance plan.
Yeah, Ali, if, if, uh, if this application were to be approved, would you prepare a stormwater operation and maintenance, maintenance manual? I imagine, Ms. Carbio, that's something that, in my experience, that gets recorded, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you have no problem doing that, Ali?
Yeah, we would provide the maintenance plan, uh, as a separate document, correct?
Your underground detention system for what it looks like, it looks like it's gonna be infiltrating into the, uh, ground?
No. No, we are not using infiltration as any in our calculations, we are, we're considering it, uh, it to be full volume uh, to be stored in, and, and, and eventually discharged into the city, into those. Uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure there may be some infiltration, but we are, we are, the, the, we calculated its volume for the, you know, without considering any infiltration.
Has any considerations been taken as to, let's say, for example, if in the years to come, um, if the underground detention system is compromised, will it be able to be accessible and need repair?
Yeah, you, you know, like in any other situation, yes, it, it, we would need to, um, you know, go through the, the parking pavement in order to access the, and make repairs. But, uh, you know, we, uh, in, in my experience, we have not had any major issues with StormTech systems. Like I said, these are one of the, uh, best systems that are useful underground storage.
Has any soil borings been done for this, uh, proposed, uh, building?
I'm sorry, what's your question again, any storm?
On any soil borings?
Um, I, no, we have not, um, but again, you know, we're not considering any infiltration uh, in calculating the volume of the StormTech system, um, so.
I understand that there's no infiltration, but for the, uh, building structure itself, has any soil borings been done?
Yeah, I would defer that question to the architect or, you know, um, it, just, I mean, I'm pretty sure we would, we would be doing soil testing to, you know, once, once the, the building's structural design is done, uh, you know, but yes, it, that, that definitely would be done at that point.
That will be all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carvallo. Now, do any members of the public have any questions about this testimony? Do any members of the public have any question about this testimony, please raise your hand and be identified?
Yes, we have several members of the public. Ms. Love, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Love Gaylor, thirty-one Park Drive North.
I'm sorry, can we, uh, unshare this plan so I can run the clock? Thank you. If you need the plans up, we can adapt too.
No.
Okay. Great, go ahead and ask her a question.
First, I wanna thank everyone for being on this late at night, and just being on, I appreciate all the township, um, servants asking great questions that show the great concern for our wonderful small community right there, Park Drive North, South and West. I've been here about seven years, and I wanna let you all know, I have just logged on from out of the country, I am on vacation, but I'm so concerned, I had to settle myself to be here. All right, is this the appropriate place to ask about the construction plan, like, how long? If this is passed, how long do, does the company anticipate it taking?
Ali, can you answer that question?
Uh, I would have to defer that, and I think that that would depend on, on the applicant and the means and methods that are the contractor uh, would, would, uh, would use, you know.
Well, if that's your answer, this is another question where I've been listening since the last meeting. We have more questions than you all have answers to, and that's not a good position to be in. Okay, so the next question is, um, all this underground work that you have to do, have you, do you all have any anticipation on how it will affect the surrounding homes, the underground work?
Are you referring to the, uh, stormwater system?
The water system.
Stormwater management system?
Well, for my, I'm, I'm a layperson, I don't know, but I know a lot of things happen when you have to make a new construction, you have to go underground for water, electric, files, you know, internet, all the things, um, you know, sewage, all the things, as you know, are many, I don't know as much as you do, but how long, and how will that affect our whole cul-de-sac community and then the community across the street, all the things in our surrounding area? How will all those underground construction projects affect us? Like, will you have to cut our water off sometime? Will the gas be off? What kind of things should we look forward to for your construction project?
So I, I don't believe, you know, we, we would, you know, there would be an outage, uh, we are, we are going to follow, we follow, you know, the township standards for all the service connections, uh, all the proposed service connections.
What does that mean?
So that there are certain standards that the contractor would, would be required to follow in order to make service connections.
That's not the answer, what I said, well, excuse me, sir, I said, how will that affect the neighborhood and community? There are standards, but what are the things that affect, like, what are the things that would, how would we be affected? Though, I hear what you're saying, that the township has standards, that's understood. Tell me, please, what kind of things, how will we be affected in what ways, when you do your underground construction projects?
The, the only thing I can think of, ma'am, is, um, if, when they do service connections, there may be some lane closure or, you know, some, uh, traffic control that maybe need to require temporarily to make those service connections.
So it'd be traffic, uh, traffic stops, what about our water, what about our electricity, what about our internet? Are there any times where they'll be cut off?
I don't expect it to be disrupted, no, I, uh, no, I, I, I don't believe it should.
No interruption to our quality of life while you all are constructing, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, hold on, um, and, uh, I don't know, that's not for you, who's, my question was, who's the target residence? I'd like to know if this gets passed, are they, would there be any incentives for West Orange residents, but that's a whole nother thing, um, and I know this is limited to just what you can testify to, I will have more questions for traffic, that's the big thing, and then our overall quality of life for our beautiful historic neighborhood. So my closing statement, I got fifty-eight seconds, great, um, there's a lot of community interest in voting no for this variance, the design.
Ma'am, ma'am, there'll be time later to make comments, right now, the time is to ask questions.
Okay, okay, did I have you considered? People, I'm looking at my notes here, I wanna make sure, you know, I'm, I'm a layperson, it's my first time doing something as formal as this. I said, thank you for your questions, how would underground affect us? He said it won't affect any of us, um. He said it won't affect any of us, um who's the target, that's not, okay, so that's the end of my questions for this area, thank you for my, for allowing me this time.
Thank you, have a wonderful evening. Do any other members of the public have any questions to Mr. Rangwalla? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do, we have uh Ms. Adams back again. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Kay Adams, still on Park Drive South. Um, Mr. Rangwalla, I appreciated your testimony. Could you please review the modernization of some of the infrastructure that you intend? Is it just for four-ten Main or are you, is it on a larger distance on Main Street?
Um so I I I believe. Uh um you're referring to, I I I'm assuming you're referring to uh the stormwater management system. Um so uh as, you know, as you heard before. Uh this would certainly improve the overalls, uh you know, uh stormwater. Um um uh you know, the surface flow situation that we currently see.
Okay, uh did did you?
Uh well improvement to this, to this uh area.
I'm so sorry, you froze for a moment. So I missed what you said.
Yeah, can you give me?
Yes, would you repeat that, please?
Yeah, so yes, there should be, there should be improvement with with respect to the stormwater. Um you know, the surface flows from uh you know, rainwater.
Thank you.
With 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 respect to the new stormwater system we are proposing.
And thank you, is it true that you you also intend to move the gas line from the main um main infrastructure? You're, are you moving the access to four-ten Main Street gas line down further south?
Uh yeah, so we're basically abandoning the existing service connection, uh not not the gas main, but yeah, the service, the gas service connection. And we we're gonna propose a new service connection uh further south.
Thank you so much, service connection is the phrase. Um so are you modernizing any of the other service connections that would impact the neighborhood? For example, electric or um uh electric?
Yeah, so electric again would be um a new service connection, um a. As well as the, you know, as well as the sa- the sanitary sewer and the water.
Okay, because this building will significantly intensify the density of our neighborhood. Are there any plans to update or modernize any other parts of infrastructure? That would uh that that we as a neighborhood access?
So uh I believe, you know, portions of the sidewalk we are, you know, that we are replacing would, you know, would be made uh new. So that possibly could be considered as, you know, the infrastructure uh that will be modernized.
Will you, do you intend to modernize any of the utility infrastructure, I should say?
Uh no, not outside of the property, no, no, nothing that we have proposed on 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 those plans.
Thank you, so most neighborhoods in this neighborhood are seventy to a hundred years old, so our infrastructure is old. Are you aware that we experience frequent blackouts, particularly during windy or stormy weather?
Um I'm aware of New Jersey in general, but no, I'm not aware of this, you know, this area in particular.
Thank you, that's all for now.
Yes, we have more members of the public, Bill Mills, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh yes, this is Bill Mills, I live on eleven Park Drive North. Um and I uh have a question for uh Mr. Rangwalla. Uh and I appreciate all the other questions that the members of the of the council have been asking and it seems that there's a lot of concern over the. Uh stormwater, and that's what my question is about, I keep uh stating that it's. The situation is gonna be better for the stormwater. Um I'm not a hydrologist or a civil engineer, so, you know, forgive me, but I do, I am able to observe the conditions in my neighborhood. And when it rains, uh a hundred percent of the water on my property, including the water from my roof, my driveway, the shed, the walkways, is absorbed. Uh by my lawn, I don't see any of it running off uh onto the street or into my neighbor's property. Nor do I see my neighbor's property up the hill, their water running into my property. So the the soil is a pretty good way of absorbing even a heavy rain like uh we've experienced in the last couple of days. Currently, there's a quite a lot of soil exposed, meaning not the soil itself, but with with, you know, grass and trees and et cetera on that property. Uh basically, that's gonna disappear, you're pretty much footprint is gonna uh cover. Uh I I I don't want to throw a figure out there and be misleading, but it looks like, you know, I don't know, ninety percent of the. Um property that would normally be absorbing uh the water. I've walked past that property many, many, many times in rains and heavy rains, and I don't see water cascading over the retaining wall down onto the street. So I I feel pretty confident to say that the water uh is pretty much absorbed. For the most part, you know, with with the exception of maybe like some super severe events um by the property. So I'm I'm having trouble understanding how there's gonna be less. Impact of the runoff when now suddenly all of that water has to be collected and diverted into the sewer that was just being absorbed into the ground previously.
Yes, just to answer that question, right, uh we 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 designed this system for a hundred-year storm, which is once in a hundred years, you know. But that doesn't mean that, you know, we, there are intermittent storms, like a twenty-five-year storm or ten-year storm. Um so, you know, this system, um you know, that said, you know, uh that, you know. Uh when we do our calculations, we do consider um all different surfaces that the water. Uh you know, the the runoff would would flow through. Um and um, you know, in in our calculations, we we, you know, we see that, you know, the overall. Flow from from this entire property in the proposed conditions, you know, as and uh, you know, something that we uh. We will share with with the township, with the township also, is that in a proposed condition, as per the calculations, we we make sure that the. Overall flow from the, from the, from the property is less than it is in existing condition. So as as you mentioned, that, you know, all the surf, all the water flows through the grass. We, you know, in in the proposed condition, we are basically catching all the surface flow, almost ninety-five percent of the surface area into inlets. Uh which is then further, you know, traveling through uh storm drains installed throughout. Throughout the property and into the storm se- storm chambers uh underground.
Yes, and I I I get that and I appreciate that, it does look like you you put a lot of thought into into that. What I'm questioning is, um when the water previously was being absorbed by the ground, now it's having to go into the the sewage system. Um that's, whereas you had been saying, pretty much it's less waters going into the sewage system or going into the overall um stormwater system. Uh but it looks to me like it would be actually more water because you have no uh arable land absorbing the water.
So when when we do our calculations in existing condition, we do consider um the, you know, the existing grass area. Um um and, you know, a- any, I mean, we use uh something called, uh you know, the standards that we follow, uh which are, you know, what the. You know, the township and the state requires us to follow to do these calculations. Uh we do consider uh the existing surface area, and in this case, you know, most of it was grass. So the flows that go through these existing surfaces, we we, you know, we follow whatever, you know, the requirements are to to do the calculations and some of. In in the, in these calculations, you know, it does consider some, it does consider um uh, you know, infiltration into the ground. Um so, you know, basically, that all of all of that, what you just mentioned is is taken into our calculations, you know, in 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 consideration. But uh, you know, so as for example, like, you know, grass, uh I'm just gonna give you a comparison, uh of. Uh grass area would have an uh 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 surface number zero point six as compared to a a pavement uh in our driveway, which would have a zero point nine eight. So it's al- you know, it's almost. Zero point two percent in, you know, per uh uh, you know, chance of water percolating as compared to zero point four percent for grass, you know. Or sorry, forty percent for grass, so, yeah, we do, we do take into account, uh you know, infiltration into the ground uh in in our calculations.
Okay, that, I I'm just questioning the accuracy of your statement, saying that it's gonna impact the system less. I I know you're calculating, you're you're figuring in the absorbency of the ground into your calculations of what's happening, but. It seems like you you'd be actually impacting um this sewer and the storm drainage system more. Uh based on the way you're you're, everything has to be diverted into that as opposed to uh being, you know, naturally absorbed into arable land.
Well, Mr. Mills, um Ali, maybe you want to explain again how the detention function and slow release function works?
Yeah, so, you know, uh basically, uh. The detention chambers are designed for a hundred-year storm, which means that it, you know, it it has enough volume to hold. A water for, you know, for for a period of time. Before we slowly release, you know, we have an outlet structure that, you know, only releases is uh water. Uh as far, you know, that 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 we intend uh to go into the city sewers, which. We make sure uh is less than what it would go in, you know, in existing condition. So the outlet structure ma- makes sure that, you know, whatever water that is released from the storm system is not immediate. It holds it, uh you know, and does not flood the the city sewers, and it only releases a, you know, small uh volume at a time.
Uh but what if the amount of of water flowing exceeds uh exceeds what you're capable of holding? Uh the water does have to go somewhere, doesn't it? I mean, you don't have a a bottomless capacity.
Yeah, that's uh, that's, you know, the the answer to that is that it is designed for a hundred-year storm, you know.
Any more questions, Mr. Bill Mills?
Um no, I I I still don't feel like I I my question was adequately answered, but no, I I think I I could be fruitless at this point.
Thank you very much, or do any other members of the public have any questions? Uh Mr. one more second, Mr. Klein.
Yes.
So, Mr. Rangwalla, maybe the, is there a way to equate the number of gallons that's leaving the site today? It's getting into the system in Main Street? And then the number of gallons that would be leaving the site in the future with the building in place and your system in place? How many gallons per hour, per day, feet per second, cubic feet per second, that kind of?
Yeah, so uh just to give you a number, right, and of course, we will share these calculations with the township engineer or with the township. But uh in in existing condition, for a two-year storm, we calculate zero point six three seven cubic feet per second. And in the proposed condition, it is zero point five four six cubic feet per second, so which is less than existing. In for a ten-year storm, we have one point one five six cubic feet per second in existing condition and one point zero six three, which is less than existing. So that's, you know, one point zero sixty, uh and then for a hundred-year storm, we have two point one eight three cubic feet per second. In existing condition and two point zero eight one in proposed condition.
All right, so to follow up with that, so can you explain, because it it doesn't seem to make sense? If it's a hundred percent, just about a hundred percent grass, you're saying that even though it's a hundred percent grass, about forty percent of the water that comes down is gonna run off?
Correct, that's for, you know, our urban grass areas with compacted soil, not all the water that flows to the ground. Is, you know, i- is is gonna go in infiltrate into the ground, it may seem that way, but it it doesn't.
Right, okay, so what Mr. Mills was was saying is that he never saw any water running off of this site? And he doesn't see any water from his property running off his property into the street? He says it's all being absorbed into the soil, is that a true statement? A hundred percent of the water is being absorbed into the grass?
I don't believe it is, but I can't, you know, I can't say, you know, I I don't want to question if it's a true or false statement, you know. In my opinion, it does, there has to be some surface flow.
Okay, right, because if you, right, if you look at your lawn in a heavy storm, if it's on a bit of a hill, some of it will start to puddle and then it'll start to run down the hill, correct? Okay, just want to make sure, thank you.
Great, we do have other members of the public.
Go right ahead.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Lencheck, two thirty-four Eagle Rock Avenue, forty-nine-year resident of the Park Drive Loop. Okay, um regarding the Boston Ivy that was suggested to be planted along the retaining wall in front of the proposed building. Is there a chance that that Ivy would then spread to the retaining wall in front of the townhouses?
Um so, you know, we would certainly have maintenance uh of, you know, of the landscaping. That would, you know, that would be done by. The, you know, the owners, so I I'm pretty sure that would, you know, your concern would be handled that, you know, with with the maintenance of the landscaping.
Okay, and how about you indicated that there would be uh trees and shrubs planted along the south side of the property? If those, the the roots from those trees and shrubs impact the retaining wall in front of the townhomes, which is very possible. Because tree roots do damage retaining walls, then who would be responsible for repairing the wall? If it's the plant from your proposed property that's impacting the property of the townhomes?
So. Again, um you know, I I let me, let me just let you, you know, as what we're proposing, we 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 have shrubs. Uh in, you know, uh closer to the retaining wall, there are existing trees already that we are, you know, we we are not proposing to be removed. Which are closer to the retaining wall. Um the trees that we do propose are at least um. Let's see, at least, one moment, let me just get that uh accurate answer for you. At least fifty feet from, you know, from the retaining wall. So I don't believe, uh uh you know, we would see any any roots from those ever small evergreen trees that we're planting on the south side. Going anywhere close to those.
How how tall are those evergreens supposed to grow?
Um in a mature condition, uh those would be fifteen to twenty feet and three to four feet wide.
Okay.
These are those evergreens, you know, which you use to shade. Um uh properties and are commonly used uh in in New Jersey.
Okay, um now, on the west side of the property, you also have proposed plantings there of of trees and shrubs. Now, um do you realize that on that side, there is also already a privet hedge that is along the property boundary? That is belongs to the property next door on Park Drive North. So how will your plantings impact the planting that is already there? Would it not make it somewhat crowded, so it'd be difficult for a fire or emergency to get through there? Because you already have an existing hedge as well as whatever you're going to plant there.
Um so I know that we would be removing all existing trees uh and plantings inside the property in that area. I'm not, uh I don't have the information of, you know, all the plantings on the other property, but I'm pretty sure, you know. There on site, um you know, changes could be made during construction. If it were to, if it was deter- determined that it would, you know, cause any obstructions, of course, with. Uh you know, with with getting permission from the township.
And 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 from the neighboring property.
So. I, you know, I would, I guess, I don't know, I I want to defer that question to um. So, I, you know, I would, I guess, I don't know, I, I want to defer that question to, um.
Yeah, Miss, Miss Lenchek, I'll, I'll step in here as, uh, you know, as a matter of law. Anything we do on our property with respect to site improvements, um, you know, should not have any impact on any of the neighboring property's uh physical boundaries. Uh, the landscaping that's being proposed, as Mr. Rangwalla testified to, is entirely within our property limits. And, uh, and as there was some questioning by a couple of board members, including the former fire chief regarding access to the building. And a- a- along the side you're referring to, there is a five-foot-wide walkway before you even get to the landscaping. So, um, you know, to Mr. Rangwalla's point, the proposed landscaping should have no impact to any of the existing landscaping on the neighbor's property.
Okay, um, now, with regard to the sidewalk that's in, on, along Main Street in front of the proposed building, it's, it was stated that uh the narrowest part is about five point one six uh feet and that it's ADA compliant. But are you aware that there is a New Jersey Transit bus stop there? So, there will be commuters waiting. There is a senior citizens home only about a block away, and you have uh, residents in motorized trans- chairs that will be trying to get by that sidewalk. Uh, children going to school, trying to get the school bus, maybe families with strollers and children. That's a lot of volume that would have to be squeezed into that small space and to the point where it's most likely that some people have to step into the street in order to make way.
Yeah, yeah, Miss Lenchek, I'm gonna address it again as a, as a legal issue. Um, the public right of, and Miss McGovern can correct me if I'm wrong, but the public right of way is the public right of way. Um, it exists today as a, as a, as a certain width sidewalk, and I don't believe that's being changed. Um, the improvements, obviously, you heard Mr. Rangwalla say that we're going to be replacing sections of the sidewalk to improve them, you know, from an aesthetic and practical and utilitarian perspective. But, you know, all of the other site work is being done within our site.
Okay, and the last question for now is regarding that, um, the alarm for the, uh, the parking garage. And I know you said you wanted to make sure that it complies with whatever the township ordinances are. Now, is the ordinance different, though, at night than it is during the day? Does this is, is, is it supposed to be uh less loud at night, and how will that impact safety?
Sure, so you, it sounds like you've done your homework. There are definitely, definitely different decibel requirements um during different hours. And, uh, and that will certainly be complied with.
Thank you.
Great. We have a couple of more members of the public with questions. We have Jasmine Santana. Jasmine, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jasmine Santana. I'm on Park Drive South. So, um, my first question is, um, something that has been brought up. It's about ex- excavating the land. I know that the house that was there previously was, you know, built in nineteen, uh, seventeen ninety. And as far as getting the entire property level with the street, at least in the front end, um, would there need to be like blasting or anything that needs to be done? That might affect the integrity of these homes that have been here for over a hundred years, a lot of these homes in the horseshoe community?
Yeah, I, I, I don't believe that to be true, but, uh, again, you know, I, I would have to defer that question to the contractors' means and methods. Uh, and, you know, eh, any issues that may come across during construction. But I, I don't believe that, you know, there would be any blasting that would be required.
Okay, um, and then my other question was, in the garage, can two cars pass each other at the same time? Um, or is it just one car at a time in the, the garage, um, like, open space?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna defer that question to the traffic engineer, but I believe it, it is, you know, designed for two cars passing each other.
Okay, but the door itself, the garage door, is just one car at a time, but inside it can be two cars?
I think that includes the garage doors as well. Um, it's, it's the two-way garage door.
Okay.
About traffic engineer maybe better, uh, the right, the better response.
Okay, um, and I had a question about the, um, drainage as well, but I think it was covered. Um, I just wanted to also mention that, um, in the garage, will there be like a drain for, if there's um, any water coming down the sidewalk and maybe going into the garage? Because I, I know I have a sump pump and a French drain in my house. So, there is a lot of water that comes down the hill, and I was wondering if it's gonna flood in that garage? And then there's gonna, you know, those cars are gonna have to move or anything like that?
Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you. And, uh, yes, we are, we are proposing flow drains on the garage floor.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Great. Any other members of the public that wish to speak, have a question? Last call. Any other members of the public? Okay, we have Gail Osby. Oh, Gail went away. Gail, did you have a question? Yes. State your name and address for the record, please. You should be able to speak now.
My name is Gail Osby. I live at twenty-seven Park Drive North. And, um, I just have two questions. One is in reference to parking. Um, I heard Mr. Wilkes and also Mr. Rutherford ask questions concerning the parking. And at this point, you were not able to answer them or to give them that information. But that is, um, like a pet peeve or a very, uh, uh, very big concern for me, because I live towards the top of the hill. And a lot of times what I'm seeing are people double parking on the other side, on the side that says no parking, which causes, um, problems as you're trying to drive out of your driveway. So, uh, because my, our driveways may be, uh, narrow, we're actually having, I, I have difficulty driving.
Ma'am, ma'am, you, you, you should ask a question. And first, the first part, the first part is, this is, sounds like traffic enforcement. That's what Town Hall Police Department is. Secondly, the traffic engineer be able to help you with the other parts of your question.
Okay, but my, my question is, when will you have a response for, for this question?
Yeah, so, Miss Osby, it's, it's, it's an excellent question. Our next witness is the traffic engineer, who is going to answer all the questions related to traffic, parking, and site circulation.
Okay, so, so attached to this question is, will you provide alternate uh parking spaces somewhere within the town for these, the apartments that are being built? If you have a two, uh, bedroom, uh, apartment, therefore, you might have two cars. But right now, you're only providing one space. So, where do you suggest, or where would you suggest that second car be placed? Because that's just going to create more congestion. That's my, uh, question.
It's a great question, and our, I, I'm not trying to be dismissive. I hope you, you can appreciate that. The traffic engineer is going to answer that exact question. Um, he, he has that in his testimony. And I doubt it's gonna be this evening, just based on the time, but to the extent that it is, you'll get that in, that answer.
So, probably the next meeting that you have?
Well, I guess we're gonna figure that out, uh, you know, shortly.
Okay, and my last question is in reference to the construction of this building. Um, how long will it take for you to construct the building? And the reason why I'm asking that is because will it affect how we are able to enter into our, our, uh, onto the street and exit out of the street? Will it affect our be, uh, will you close down sections of the street or the, you know, parts of it in order to construct? How will that affect the residents who are living here right now?
So, yeah, Ali, I don't, are you able to answer that question?
Well, I, I would, I would say that, yes, the, you know, what, when, if, if there are any uh sidewalk or curb-related improvements, we may have to, you know, uh, propose some traffic control. But I don't expect that to have any road, road closures, uh, you know, or, or lane closures.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's what I wanted.
And Ali, that would be coordinated with the police department, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, yes.
Okay, because one, one thing that I do notice that anytime they work on our street, the, uh, state troopers or the police will block off the street. So, we're, we don't have access of going out the proper way. We, we may have to go out the in-exit or whatever. We have to turn our cars around midway. So, that's my concern, and especially in the winter time with the snow um, uh, removal and snow being, um, on the ground, is very difficult to manage this street. So, with additional parking or, uh, if the parking situation isn't remedied, um, that would be a major concern, I think, for all of us. All right, so if you could, uh, I'll, I'll be at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're gonna stop testimony and comments and questions. It's ten fifty-seven. Uh, Mr. Wine, um, we can have you at the, uh, September fourth Planning Board Meeting. Will that be good for you and your, uh, experts and applicant?
So, I would say let's do it. I can tell you that my planner is, uh, is likely unavailable that evening. Um, but I know that it sounds like we're, we're going to have, uh, some additional foundational testimony, as well as obviously our traffic engineer. So, I, I, I certainly would love to take the next available meeting, and we'll kind of see where that goes.
Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman? If I could to, um, um, Mr. The Wine, if, if it possible, I, I was gonna ask that question of the traffic engineer too, because of my background and, and everything with the, uh, the town and, and traffic. Could you ask your traffic engineer to answer all those questions in regards to um, what kind of emergency flow or, or, or any kind of planning for the operation, whether it be cranes? Because their testimony was given earlier that, you know, um, concrete, um, flooring is gonna be putting in. So, that, that's gonna be long-term projects, you know, several days and stuff. So, if, if we can try and get some kind of study together or plan ahead of time so that it could, it could answer a lot of questions for those who are in the audience.
Yeah, we can certainly try to do that. I can't promise that it's gonna be my traffic engineer who can get those answers, but we'll, we'll try to do our best on our homework, Mr. Sir.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just trying to help, um, you know, facilitate the, the process, because that was gonna be one of my questions anyway. So, all right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, PB twenty-four, they go six foot and Main Street, holdings LLC, block one thirteen lots, two sixty-two, two sixty-four, and thirty S. Four ten Main Streets will be carried to the September fourth Planning Board Meeting via Zoom. There will be no new, um, uh, what's the word?
Notice.
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 Notice, sorry, I couldn't spell that. Well, I'm old.
That's right, you're old now.
No new notice, uh, required. Okay, uh, the next regular Planning Board Meeting will be September fourth, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty PM via Zoom. The next special Planning Board Meeting will be held August fourteenth, uh, in person at six thirty PM at Town Hall and will be available to be viewed via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Klein, aye, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes are above the nose. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.